Call to order, the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Kiper.
Here.
Chanset. Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Mole.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
Vogel Singer.
Here.
Thirteen.
Okay, and Alderman Chanset did let us know that he'll be about 15 minutes late tonight. Okay, item two is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the recording and broadcast. If you come up, just adjust the microphone for you, and we just need your name if you come up, so we can have that in the record. Item three is approval of minutes from March 26th, 2024, and April 15th, 2024.
I have one change.
Okay.
It was on the special meeting. My name is spelled incorrectly, my last name.
The what?
You're really proof for reading, huh?
Um, 4:15, special meeting. No worries.
With that correction, then, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm looking.
Second. Motion by Vogel Singer, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four is items removed, edited, or changed from tonight's agenda. Do we have anything?
Yeah.
Changes? Okay. We'll move on to item five for matters from the public for items not on the agenda. So anything that's not on the agenda tonight, if you want to come up and use the microphone, just give us your name and then your concern.
Honorable mayor and city council members, my name's Matthew Elman. I reside at 429 South Water Street. The reason for my visit tonight along with some of my neighbors is to share some of the plights of our neighbors and neighborhood during the project that's going down in our area and neighborhood, which is in regard to the water treatment plant. Obviously, we understand the importance of this project, and we understand that there's going to be inconveniences with any major construction project, especially when you're talking about all the utilities that are involved, which is sanitary, water, and storm sewer. We've lived, most of us have lived in that neighborhood for multiple decades, myself for over 31 years, and we understand the benefits and the drawbacks of an area that is heavily populated and utilized with the quarry and the pool and all the other truck traffic that comes through. But recently, myself and my neighbors kind of reached a boiling point, and before I share some of the particulars of that, I do want to make a comment that in response to the concerns, the city staff, our aldermen, the city manager, the chief of police have all been very responsive with taking my calls, speaking with me, and in some cases with the project, even visiting my home. And really where our main concerns lie, it was with the contractors that have been led on this project and their conduct. The three things in particular would have to do with is the lack of communication, the disrespect shown, and the life safety violations. In regards to communication, we understand there are going to be periods of time where access has to be limited, but we would expect greater notice than leaving to run errands or perform our daily duties to find out we can't get out, and then be told we can't get out for the entire day, and then be told and lied to that we were informed, which we were not. Apologies have been made by some of the contractors, but not all of them in this case, and this has happened on multiple occasions. Secondly, disrespect. When you live in a neighborhood, you expect the people that come into that neighborhood to respect you and the fact that you live there. And every day, when we drive by or walk by, we would get sneers and dirty looks, and quite honestly, conversations that we'd attempt to have with the contractors onsite just to understand basic things. We would get gestures and obviously where they would literally turn their, turn away from us and not even address us. One of the contractors, in fact, and I know this because they've seen them getting out of their car, has an "F you, your feelings" blastered all over the back of their car. So if this is the type of contractors the city is hiring, I would ask you to revisit that and take some action in terms of having them show respect to the people who live in this neighborhood. Lastly, and most importantly, life safety. I've been on the phone with the fire department, police department, and there's been periods of this project, including last week, where there was no way for life safety vehicles to access my home and my neighbors' homes. Now, I believe that's probably a code of the city, and I would venture to say after 40 years in government myself, that it's probably part of the contract that they need to maintain life safety access, and that was told to me by the project engineer as well. And on multiple occasions, that has not been the case. Now, I just want you to be aware of it. My neighbors and I will proactively continue to look out on behalf of ourselves and the city as a whole, and we'll be in contact should we see things happen. And in terms of the future, we really want this area to be given a closer look because of the speed that people use going down Water Street to bypass Main and other areas, and also the fact that stop signs are very often ignored. In fact, within the last couple of days, I almost got hit by a semi truck who completely ignored the stop sign coming up Water, I mean Union Street. I thank you for your time, and I thank the city officials and also staff that have been accommodating to help me and my neighbors in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to us, and you know, I know we were aware of this, I believe it was last Friday, and I know that corrective actions have been taken, and we will want monitor that much closer in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Wolf.
Yes.
As I indicated in my email, Representative from the contractor is here tonight if city council wishes to ask them any questions.
Anybody have any questions for the contractor, or you want to have the contractor come up and just give us a brief?
It's up to you guys, really.
I think that would be good to hear from the contractor, just a couple of minutes about what their plans are moving forward.
My name is Vincent Picardi. I work for IHC Construction. We're the GC on the wastewater treatment plant project. We have partnered with multiple subcontractors to deliver this project to the city of Batavia, one of which was performing work on Water Street. Their responsibilities, including those utilities that were just mentioned. We have outlined the expectations to our subcontractors several times throughout the duration of this project. We have continued to reiterate those projects, or those expectations to them, and they're not just expectations or requirements. So they need to do a better job, we need to do a better job of keeping an eye on them. We've taken corrective action to get individuals off the project or removed from the project so these concerns are no longer going to be an issue for the duration of the project. Work is wrapping up up there, it should be done in about two months. Obviously, work will continue within the plant for the next several months, go over two years, but point being is that we're making the steps to get these guys off the project and get the right people out there to get the job done from here on out. I really don't have much else to say besides that. There is no excuse, there is no explanation to some of the stuff that's been explained. We got to do a better job.
Sure.
Can I just real quick say, two months is, that's definitely light at the end of the tunnel. I was not aware of these things going on, but two months does really lead into when school lets out, so there'll be more child traffic, bikes, pedestrian, everything, so that's just something to definitely be aware of.
The life safety piece is very concerning. What's, what's your plan to remedy that?
What's the concerns from a life safety standpoint? I didn't fully catch that.
See, vehicles couldn't reach several residents' houses at certain times.
That will not be an issue from here on out. I know from personal experience, there was some rather large holes that were over there that I don't think had, you know, complete barricades around some of that at certain points, and been made aware of that on other times, especially with bike traffic through there doing the cut-throughs, that's why we talked about that last week, was that that's really important to make sure that nobody gets in any of that. But now I think it's all just finish work, redo the street.
Yes. Yeah, the deep excavation work is behind us. There's some minor excavations that we have to do to get the storm sewer in there, but temp access roads will be provided to get emergency vehicles to any of the houses that, you know, need access from an emergency vehicle standpoint. Thank you. Thanks.
Then finally, very quickly, because we have gotten a lot of calls from residents on that area. The city will be just patching the roadway as part of this project. That will really allow us to allow some of those trenches to settle over the next year, so that in the year 2025, we're going to go back in with a full resurfacing.
Okay, but the curbs and everything will all be done?
Yeah, curbs, everything will be in, and the pavement will be in, but with patching, it's not going to be uncommon probably for a patch to settle over the winter time, and we'll go back in next year and fully resurface.
Good to know. Thank you. Okay, up next would be the consent agenda, item six. Alderman Beck. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the hand.
Anada McGrath. I'm curious as to where we are on reducing the residential speed limit.
We have conducted and completed both the collector study and the residential study. We are going through that data and in the process of creating a comprehensive plan to bring forward to city council. You should expect that probably in the next month or two.
So within the next month or two, kids will be getting out of school?
Correct.
And we're waiting longer? I mean, this has been almost a year since this has been brought up to the council, the city?
Well, I think we have a process and we're going through it, Anada, and as soon as we can get that done, then we're going to come back and discuss this again, and I believe we will end up passing a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Whether you want to believe IDOT says yes or no to it, that's another story.
IDOT has nothing to do with it. We're talking about residential, we're not talking about state streets.
Well, I believe we're going to do it, so I can't make the process go any faster.
Lots of head shaking yes, so I'm assuming that that's going to happen.
I believe that we have the support to do that. I think we want to wait till we finalize this process and go through that and do it the best way we know how, so that way it gets done, and there's no challenges to it, and there's no problem with it.
You really think there's going to be challenges?
Nothing would surprise me today.
Thank you.
Are there others? Okay, then we'll move on to item number six, the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
Consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2024-68-R authorizing vehicle purchase for Community and Economic Development Department for an amount not to exceed $50,000. Resolution 2024-65-R authorizing a contract with Ara Valdivia Contractors, Inc. for the 2024 Bridge Preventative Maintenance Project for an amount not to exceed $73,300. Resolution 2024-70-R approving telecommunications franchise agreement with VinaCom Communications. Resolution 2024-69-R approving contract with IHC for 12 kilovolt conduit installation. Your honor, I would approve, move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Motion by Beck, second by Sulfah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Up next will be item seven, an oath of office for probationary officer Giovanni Romero Peña.
Hi, good evening, council. I'd like to introduce you to our newest probationary police officer, Giovanni Romero. He was recently selected by the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commission to fill an existing vacancy within the police department. He is a lifelong resident of the Chicago area and a graduate of East Laiden High School. Officer Romero has done undergraduate coursework at Triton College in River Grove, Illinois, and has an extensive work history in the field of security, both in the private sector and in the military. Officer Romero proudly served in the United States Marine Corps for five-plus years from 2015 through 2020, when he was honorably discharged at the rank of Sergeant E5. During his service, he was recognized with the Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Marine Security Guard Ribbon, and Expert Pistol Badges. His service time included overseas deployments in Cyprus, Kuwait, and Togo. Officer Romero is scheduled to begin training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy this coming Monday at the College of DuPage, and we are extremely excited and thrilled to have him join the team. I think he's going to make an immediate impact once he gets back from the academy.
So can I ask you to come up here and stand and face this way? You're going to be on the camera.
Giovanni, sure, I'll give you this for you.
They won't see me before we, community wants to see you, so. Okay, if you raise your right hand or if you have a name, I have stated your name.
I, Giovanni Romero.
Have been appointed.
Have been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On April 17th, 2024.
On April 17th, 2024.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're paid.
Okay, up next will be item eight, ordinance 2438, annexing 0 South 700, 0 South 881, 0 South, or 01 South 8, 915 Deer Path Road.
Thank you. This is the continuing efforts to close the islands that are surrounded completely by the city limits. These are three properties owned by two owners. We had sent letters back in October. We had also opened up negotiations with both owners about developing annexation agreements to address some concerns. Unfortunately, we have not been able to come to terms on that. We kind of stopped negotiations in February, so because of that, we are now moving ahead with an involuntary annexation of these properties, very similar to all the other ones we've done in the past. So this is getting to the point where it's kind of routine to an extent, but this is, you know, one of the last ones in the area. We have about four areas left to go.
Any questions, comments? Is there anybody here from the public on this one? No. What were the homeowners' primary concerns?
Concerns were for, well, one was proposing to develop the land. There's a farm part, there's a farmed area or agricultural area on part of it. The other was just that they wanted to develop in the county.
What, what?
They just wanted to develop and develop in the county with, you know, some other things. They had some, you know, items that we're trying to address in the annexation agreement, but, you know, as a non-conforming use, if there's anything that's not conforming with like animals and types of things, those are allowed to continue anyway.
Okay, so the current conditions can continue?
Correct, absolutely.
And this is on the east side of Deer Path, correct?
Correct, right at the corner of Limestone and Deer Path.
The first three properties, right?
The first three properties, right.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2438, annexing 01 South 700, 01 South 881, and 0 South 915 Deer Path Road.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that one has to go on the regular agenda or consent? Right up next is number nine, Ashton Ridge Subdivision, 1,010 McKee Street and 301 North Van Norwick Avenue. Write this one off for us.
Get this to off. Tonight, we have four items on the agenda. I'll just kind of talk about them as a group. For the Ashton Ridge subdivision, this is the three addresses that Alderman Wolf wrote off, but this is a proposed project that was reviewed by the Plan Commission over the course of three meetings. Ultimately, with the recommendation that the Plan Commission made, the project now stands at 86 townhome units on the 17.54 acres set aside for the multifamily residential and 73 single-family residences on the 14.23 acres. There was a public hearing held on, it's actually March 12th or 13th, I should say, and then there was two Plan Commission meetings subsequent after that, when the hearing was closed, where the commission reviewed the project. The four items, or the four, or two ordinances and two resolutions that are before you tonight, ordinance 202435 would amend the Compress of Plan Land Use Map, designating this property from the mixed-use designation to the residential five to eight dwelling units per acre for the full site. Ordinance 24036 is a rezoning ordinance, would rezone the property from the MU mixed-use district that the property is presently zoned to the R1H single-family residential high-density district and the R3 multi-family low-density district. It would also propose a planned development or put a planned development overlay on the property that would include modifications to zoning code. Those include to modify the allowed FAR for the single district, family district properties. It would also allow for wider garages as percentage of the front facade, up to 57%, which is similar to the Whining Creek approval. And there would also be a reduction in the allowed side setbacks between the townhome buildings. So there's, those are modifications listed in the ordinance, as well as a number of conditions of approval that are included in that particular ordinance. Resolution 24066 is a preliminary plat of subdivision approval for the site, and then resolution 2024067 is the acceptance of the tree preservation ordinance determination for the site. This is one of the first properties that we are applying that new ordinance to. So as I said, the March 13th meeting of the Plan Commission, the public hearing was conducted, 11 speakers addressed the commission over a number of issues that I identified in the report, as well as asking questions. Those included, but were not limited to, the proposed lot sizes, the perceived incompatibility with the existing residential areas around it, traffic concerns, mostly in relation to the AC storm school, but just generally as well, the need for affordable housing, the storm, there's also several questions about the stormwater management proposal, as well as the present mixed-use designation, where some speakers indicated that they felt that that was more appropriate here. The draft minutes of all the meetings were included in the year packet, so that was available for the commission, the council. And over the course of the subsequent two meetings, there was significant discussion by the Plan Commission. At the April 3rd meeting, there was a reduction proposed by the applicant, reducing the requested floor area ratio modification. At that meeting, they did reduce, the applicant reduced, proposed reducing it to 0.65 from the .71 requested. They also, the commission discussed a number of items, including internal pathways through the development, wanting to see some improvements to that, as well as the requirement for a crosswalk relief under the subdivision code, so part of that particular meeting. The applicant agreed to, or at that meeting, through the course of the meeting, the commission made those suggestions through the course of their discussion, and then ahead of the April 10th meeting, the applicant did provide revised drawings to staff addressing several of those items that was presented at the April 10th meeting. At the April 10th meeting, the applicant proposed a reduction of the townhome portion by three lots. That allowed them to make some modifications to the lot sizes that, where they made those fully compliant. They added a active path through the site, as well as a amenity area to allow residents to walk through that area, and that would also provide a connection to parking, areas where more on-street parking is available. And at that hearing, the applicant, after doing further review, reduced their FAR requests for properties along Van Norwick, or they proposed reducing those lots to better integrate with the surrounding neighborhood, reducing the FAR request to .57 for those properties. The applicant, or the commission was appreciative of those changes. They did have additional discussion about landscaping to address the potential impacts of the construction of Road A to one of the adjoining property owners. There was discussion about the fencing for the project, where the applicant did note that their covenants and restrictions would limit the fence design to basically a wrought iron style aluminum fence throughout the subdivision. One of the conditions of approval the Plan Commission made was to include that fence along the shared property line with the school property, and so that that is also a condition in the ordinance before you. And there's other conditions that, as I alluded to in the staff report, regarding parkway trees. There was a lot of discussion about, with staff and with the commission, about trying to preserve additional trees, and the conditions are reflective of that, but the conditions also do allow for an opportunity with the final engineering to review whether ultimately it's feasible to preserve some of those trees. The commission did take action at that meeting. There was split votes on each of the findings, or most of the findings for the zoning map amendment. Those are in the ordinance before you, and there is language, I should point out, in the ordinance and resolutions that basically make the, would, the effectiveness of these ordinances would be contingent on the applicant closing on the property. That was done similarly at Whining Creek, but that, and the Batavia Square project most recently, but that gives opportunity for the, basically if the applicant does not move ahead in purchasing the property, it does not encumber the property in the future with these approvals. So there was a four to three vote by the Plan Commission to recommend approval of the Compress of Plan Land Use Map change. There was a four to, that's what's before you with ordinance 24035. Similarly, by a four to three vote, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the zoning map and planned development map amendment, subject to the modifications and conditions that are in the ordinance before you. Third, the design review, the Plan Commission recommended approval of design review by a vote of four to three contingent on city council approval of these actions, and then by a five to two vote, the Plan Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat that's before you. The applicant does have a short presentation prepared tonight, so they are able to provide that and answer any questions the commission or council may have, and as I noted in the staff report, staff does recommend approval of these items tonight.
Thank you. I guess we'll get the applicant to come up now and the presentation, and then we'll discuss it. Thanks for having us this evening. My name's Russ Whitaker. I'm an attorney at Rosenholme and Whitaker, here this evening on behalf of Pulte Home Company as a contract purchaser of the approximately 32-acre property before you this evening. As Drew mentioned, three Plan Commission hearings, I think we ran about eight and a half hours, I'm hoping a little bit less time here tonight. I kid, but I'm going to kind of go high level, get into some of the issues that were, we talked about at Plan Commission, high-level issues, planning concepts, and then if there's other detailed questions about the plan, we can dive into those. This is not working. It's frozen because it's on. It's like you go to slideshow. All right, there we go. So by way of introduction, and many of you may know, Pulte from, from previous projects, but Pulte Home Company has been building homes in the Chicago region for over 50 years. Last year, continued to expand in the, in the region. Pulte built over 700 homes in the Chicago region. We've had the top-selling communities in the Chicagoland region for the last seven years, speaking to the level of investment and the type of communities we're building. We are, we are in Batavia currently, Drew. I, it's not letting me move. So I'm going to, I'm going to kind of step away from that, and hopefully we can figure out the, the technical here. We're currently in Batavia at Whining Creek. Whining Creek was approved in 2021. We opened for sales in December of '22.
How are you? I just clicked back into the PowerPoint, so hopefully that's all it was. I think it was just on Zoom.
All right. I don't know that I've ever had that much technical difficulty on these. We've, today, we've sold 83 homes, so we're clearly doing something right out at Whining, Whining Creek. I note in picture at the bottom, we do have ranches that have been incorporated in Whining Creek. About 30% of the homes sold in Whining Creek have been ranches. I guess good news, bad news. We anticipate winding up sales at Whining Creek by the end of next year on the sales floor. We've heard from a lot of Batavia residents. In fact, we've sold more homes at Whining Creek to existing Batavia residents than residents from any other community. One of the criticisms, criticisms that we've heard from Batavia residents is about location at Whining Creek. We've heard clear preference from Batavia residents for homes east of Randall Road, and we've also heard a preference for homes proximate to downtown Batavia, hence the project before you this evening. Talk a little bit about plan evolution. Pulte originally presented a concept plan for development of the Siemens property to the Plan Commission and then the city council last year. The plan covered 15, the 15-acre Siemens property and was limited to only single-family detached dwellings. Based on feedback that we received from the, from the council, we went back to the drawing board and we significantly expanded the scope of the project. We obtained control over adjacent land parcel, facilitating a comprehensive plan for the entirety of the redevelopment, redevelopment property you see on the plan today. This was expressed as a desire, not only of the board a year ago, but also in comprehensive plan documents. This additional property allowed us to diversify product, still providing that move-up, single-family home that we think is an important addition to the Batavia market, but also incorporating a townhome component that offers a comparatively lower entry price into the new home market. We take pride in working collaboratively with planning departments across the region, and we're very proud to have earned city staff support on the plan that went before your Plan Commission. We work with city staff to refine plan details and address a myriad of concerns from tree preservation to regional flooding issues and architectural considerations. In coordination with staff, we incorporated a ranch floor plan into the lineup of homes that will be offered at Ashton Ridge. As many of you may know, Pulte is also the owner of the Del Webb brand of senior housing. The image of the, the home here is the Ranch Vista, which is a plan that will be offered at Ashton Ridge. This image is Model Home at Lincoln Prairie by Del Webb, a community that is under construction by Del Webb in Aurora today. In a, in a similar fashion, we've tried to collaborate and address concerns raised throughout the meetings with residents and throughout the Planning and Zoning Commission progress. One of the residents we heard from was Bill Slaker. Mr. Slaker lives adjacent to the project on Van, Van Norwick. We worked with Mr. Slaker to provide a landscape, landscape plan for improvements to his property. You see that plan on the screen before you. We're currently working towards an agreement for the installation of the landscape that Mr. Slaker believes will address his concerns. Again, showing how Pulte is proactively working with the community to develop a better plan. We heard concerns about parks and schools. That was a loud concern from residents. Pulte has worked proactively with both the school district and the park district to address needs. With respect to the park district, the, the district determined that the neighborhood was well-served by existing park infrastructure. They elected to receive a cash contribution in lieu of a land, land donation. Pulte will make an approximately $710,000 cash, $710,000 cash contribution to the park district in association with this project. As you can see on the map, there are two playgrounds in the adjacent HC Storm Elementary School. There is also Memorial Park, which includes a playground, which again, was the basis for the park district's decision for cash contribution in lieu of land donation. The school district, we had, I think, fair to say, more extended conversations with school district administration. Those conversations were a little more nuanced. The district, the school district also elected to receive a cash contribution in lieu of land donation. Pulte will contribute approximately $370,000 to the school district. As you can see in this letter, the school board confirmed the administration's election of a cash contribution in public discussions during a school board meeting, which this letter from the superintendent formalizes. However, the district's needs didn't stop there, nor did Pulte's efforts to cooperate with the school district. The district has plans for improvement to the adjacent HC Storm Elementary School. While those plans have not yet been publicly released, one of the district's goals is to improve traffic flow in and around the school. Today, buses and passenger vehicles wrestle through a single point of ingress and egress off Van Norwick. In coordination with the district, Pulte is dedicating an outlot along the north property line that will facilitate a second means of ingress and egress to HC Storm. While this will mean additional traffic within the Ashton Ridge subdivision, something I'm sure some of our buyers will have questions about, Pulte acknowledges the broader public benefit and is happy to collaborate with the district and the city on this important improvement. Before I move on from the school district, there were a lot of other resident questions regarding student generation and whether the school district was able to accommodate. We never heard concern from the school district on that issue, but we did a little digging and, and came up with some of this information that we wanted to present to the city council tonight. By way of perspective, statistics that we pulled from publicly available information through the school district, district-wide, there's been a steady decline in student population, about 15% over the last 10 years. At HC Storm, current enrollment is down 27%, or approximately 125 students from 2013. Class sizes are correspondingly smaller at HC Storm than is average across other Batavia schools. This information ties back to the district's planning efforts and enrollment projections. In the summary of documentation where the studies, where the school district studies future enrollment, I think it's important to note out that the district specifically concluded that new housing developments are unlikely to fully offset the declining birth rates. They're projecting a, they're projecting a continued decline in enrollment over the next five years, stabilizing at about 5,000 students, or approximately 83% of what district enrollment was a decade ago. While I appreciate the concerns about district's capacity, I believe the school district understands their business and has made an educated decision about the impact of Ashton Ridge. A little bit more project details. We heard, we heard concerns about density at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The starting point for any discussion about density starts with, starts with the existing zoning district. The, the simple fact of the matter is that we are downzoning the property from its existing designation. To be clear, the proposed zoning districts, the R1H and the R3 that's proposed by Pulte, are significantly more restrictive than the existing zoning designation for the property. It's currently zoned mixed-use. Development under the zoning designation would generally be more intensive than the surrounding neighborhood. In fact, development under the mixed-use designation would look or feel much like downtown Batavia, where mixed-use development is also encouraged. In the MU district, zero-foot setbacks are permitted. We have a minimum setback of 22 feet to our garage. Interestingly, in the MU district, you're expressly prohibited from having a setback greater than 10 feet, again, speaking to the intensity of use. Maximum building height in the MU district is 50 feet. Here, with the proposed rezoning, we're at two stories. There is no limit on floor area or density in the MU district. Staff dove into that issue a little bit with the Plan Commission, and I believe the number that they explained is that well over 400 units could be developed under that MU zoning designation. We talked a little bit about the viability of commercial properties. The, the property, as you see on the map here, is located squarely between downtown Batavia and the Randall Road Commercial Corridor. The property is well-served by commercial uses within these well-established districts. I think this is one spot where we got to a little bit of consensus at the Plan Commission, that commercial development on this parcel was probably not beneficial to either of those existing districts, because there simply wasn't sufficient separation. Moreover, from a viability standpoint, probably just wasn't something realistic, given the prevailing rents in downtown Batavia today, and what would be necessitated to sustain commercial development on this property. We looked at neighborhood context. This is a diverse neighborhood. You have multifamily, single-family, educational, industrial, and limited commercial uses. All of those uses are immediately adjacent to the subject property. That obviously creates some difficulties as we think about logical transition, logical transitions. The single-family portion of the proposed development matches or is slightly higher than the, than the density in the adjacent neighborhoods. We transition internally between single-family homes and townhomes. The townhome portion of the community is significantly less dense than the neighboring multifamily. This 3D blocking model shows the proposed homes within the context of the neighborhood. I think the bird's eye view helps to show the transition between residential product types in this neighborhood, the broader neighborhood, and that the proposed development is not inconsistent with the established character of the neighborhood. A couple of other considerations as I kind of wrap up preliminary comments, comments here. Downtown Batavia, we spent a lot of time talking about downtown Batavia during the, during the Plan Commission meeting. I've had my business downtown Naperville for 20 years. I wouldn't leave downtown Naperville, because there's a certain energy to it. So I've served on the DNA board in downtown Naperville for probably 15 years, and, and I am an active member of that downtown community in Naperville. So this is something that's, that sort of speaks to me. But what I wanted to say is that a comprehensive plan specifically notes that downtown Batavia is the heart and soul of the city. Redevelopment of downtown is a top priority. Support of downtown commerce is not just about investment of dollars or approval of projects in downtown. The most important thing this council can do to support downtown Batavia merchants is to grow the pool of patrons and disposable income moving through downtown Batavia. Ashton Ridge, Ashton Ridge households represent, on average, $46,658 of annual expenditures. $46,658 of new annual expenditures per household. For these residents, downtown Batavia will be an extension of their neighborhood. They're not driving to downtown Batavia, which is a destination from west of Randall Road. It's an extension of their neighborhood. It's a walkable part of their neighborhood. The downtown Batavia housing market. Investment is needed in the downtown Batavia housing market. We pulled these, these statistics on homes sold within one mile of downtown Batavia over the last 12 months. The average home is 80 years of age. Average home is 1,850 square feet. I think the, the, one of the most important numbers, though, is that the average sales price of homes within one mile of downtown Batavia was $367,000. Comparatively speaking, that's $100,000 discount to homes in Batavia in general. So I think it says a couple of things. It says that there's a certain housing stock proximate to downtown, and as you invest in downtown, you need to diversify housing stock. It's not necessarily the, the lower-income housing stock that needs the diversification. It's housing stock needs to be built at other price points. There's an existing stock of affordable homes in downtown Batavia, and as we supplement with higher income homes in downtown Batavia, some of those existing homes at lower price points will become available. We call this naturally occurring affordable housing, with new residents able to move in and backfill residents moving out of those existing affordable homes. I, I would note that if you think about successful downtowns in the region, be it Geneva, be it St. Charles, be it Naperville, Downers Grove, many of the downtowns that attract people from outside of the community, one of the things those downtowns all have in common is that they have a very successful downtown fringe. They have a downtown fringe that has homes that are, on average, more expensive than the homes in the community as a whole. And the reason that's so important is those people who live around the fringe of the downtown are going to spend the most amount of time in downtown. If those people have disposable income to spend in the downtown community, it's going to benefit the business owners, and it's going to continue to build your downtown. I think one more point as I close up here, and it's about the regional housing market. We heard a lot about affordability from, from neighbors and also from the Plan Commission during, during the meeting. Crane's published a regional housing market update yesterday in the metro region, of which Kane County is a part. March homes were at their lowest point in over a decade. There is a major inventory problem. Batavia is not immune to the issue. There were a total of 18 homes on the market in Batavia last month. I, that's almost something that you have to snicker at, because I never would have imagined you could count on a couple hands the number of homes for sale in a community like this. The market, the market is wildly out of balance with lack of, with lack of supply driving increased prices. The next slide is a selection of news media on the issue. These are all sort of talking points from, you know, any news media that you might pick based on your political preferences. They're all really saying the same thing. And I won't read all of these, but I'll leave them on the screen for a minute so you can look at them. But the, but the synopsis that everybody is reaching is pretty clear. It is that new construction is a, is a critical component of addressing a dramatic supply problem in the new home market. New home construction has a migration effect, freeing up existing units for new families. This cycle helps to loosen the market, ultimately relieving pressure on prices. So before you today is a project that we're very proud of. We've worked very hard on. We've made improvements based on community feedback. We've made improvements based on staff feedback. We've made improvements based on this council's feedback. We've made improvements based on the Plan Commission's feedback to specifically lose units, to open spaces up, to include some walking paths and some additional recreational areas. We're very proud of the project. We do think it's a better project today than it was when we started. So, you know, that is part of the collaborative process. We think it's at a point today where it, it should be approved. We've been at this for over a year. Before we deliver our first home, it's going to be another year, assuming we're able to move forward here. So some of these articles speak about the, the timeliness of being able to get something to market. It is important that we're able to move through these processes in order to bring supply to market and address the, the Batavia new home demand. So with that, I'll stop talking. I'm happy to answer questions for you. Like I said, we did like eight and a half hours at Plan Commission, so I got my rest and we're ready to go tonight. Thank you.
You want to start?
Mr. Whitaker, just wanted to, this room will be full of criticism. You've dealt with criticism for months. I'm born and raised Ward III, went to HC Storm School myself, have a daughter there right now, know very well the ins and outs of the entire neighborhood. Just before we get into additional criticisms, I want to say thank you for, A, wanting to bring investment to the community, because we appreciate it. And B, also wanted to comment positively on the fact that you went through various rounds of altering the plan, modifying the plan, listening to criticism and critique already. You could have walked anytime you wanted to. So before criticisms come, I just wanted to say thank you for wanting to invest in the city of Batavia. Many people do appreciate it, and we appreciate the fact that you're willing to be flexible in modifying the plan. I actually was all for the original plan that was all single-family homes, but I understood why council wanted varying why council wanted varying degrees of home types and different price points, so totally understood. But personally, all the changes, very much appreciated, and I, for one, am looking forward to something like this in this neighborhood. I remember the days when we had Furnace Electric, then Siemens. Totally remember what it was like when we had years of just fallow ground. I would much rather see life, vibrancy, homes, kids, and more activity than just a shallow field as it is today. So, thank you.
Appreciate that. I have a niece at HC Storm too, so it's been a unique level of or amount of conversation on this one in my household as well.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I thought you hit Dan. Dan?
I want to echo George's remarks as well. Could you go back to that 3D slide? I'm really happy that you put that in there. For context, I don't want to admit that I go on Facebook, but I do. And it's difficult sometimes when we're in this room and the audience is empty. We feel like we're in a vacuum sometimes, and we don't have any input. It's just us talking to each other. I feel the same way sometimes when I go on Facebook. Some of the criticisms I get are echoed. People suddenly have degrees in things they don't have degrees in. It is what it is. A lot of us who have been sitting up here have been reading these memos for 10 years, 15 years. We've been telegraphing to the community that this is the type of development that we've been looking for, and you're the first developer to put together the Wyerick property, which meant that this had connectivity. It was always a puzzle piece for me that needed to be filled. And up until you guys came forward, it was a partial puzzle piece. So I appreciate that you guys were able to put everything together. It helps with connectivity issues, meaning that we wouldn't have to have a Phase Two or Phase Three come around later. I imagine you would have tried to buy that property to expand upon what is that you have here. It wouldn't have been perfect, and it certainly wouldn't have been integrated exactly had you come to this project with everything, and here you did. This does not look anything like the cramming in of houses that I thought it was going to look like. This is brilliant. We should make a requirement that everyone that presents to us show us something like this. Have we seen that block of cheese that was one with Washington? This would have been, that project would be built today if they would have done this. The houses are not nearly as close to the school as I thought. There are much more dense areas within walking distance of this. I had a beer at a friend's house who had not enough room to have a bonfire, an illegal bonfire, in his backyard, but he did. The house took up the entire envelope of the land, and here I see open space. Here I see what I wish my neighborhood looked like. I live in Mill Pond, where I think are the only affordable homes left in Batavia now. It's a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, nothing-special townhouse on slab with an irregular garage and terrible parking. And all of a sudden this month, they're selling at $275,000, which I would never pay to move in there. But that's what it costs to live in affordable housing in Batavia. I should cash out. I should go open that bar in Puerto Vallarta, and this is the height of this market. But I also hear people say, this is not the height of this market. This is a desirable community. We've worked really hard to get to where we're at. So my only question is this. Is there anything truly missing based on the criticism that we have received that you think you could change? Can you lose any units from this and still do a deal? Are we right up to the line? Or is there still room for negotiation, if you will? And be frank, are we, are we close?
I mean, this is where we need to be, right? I mean, we could come in to a lot of places, and we could present plans that were off the wall and bake in and know that we're going to have to negotiate and deal and cut a bunch of units. I represent Polte across the entire Chicago region, and so I've done probably 20 of these a year with Polte. We go all over the place. And I think one of the nice things about working with Polte is we don't play games. We want to be straightforward, and we want to be good collaborators. We're working with you to eliminate units where we really needed to, and as we looked at it, you know, one of the Plan Commissioners made some valid points and suggested that there should be some additional walking trails. We lost some units. We were able to figure out how to make it work without price increases, right? We're paying for land. We've got, not only are home prices high, but construction prices are like even higher, right? So we're dealing with a lot of pressures internally to be able to deliver homes that are still sellable in the market. And so I would ask the city to keep in mind that this is what we need to have approved to be able to build the project. I would also have the, ask the city to keep in mind that every time we lose a unit, that the money's got to come from somewhere. At the end of the day, we have return metrics that we've got to meet. And so if we lose a unit, then we're going to have to figure out how to pick up that cost elsewhere. When we came back with a revised plan and we lost a couple of the units, one thing we did is we modified the townhome elevations. So there was a really nice wraparound porch in units on the townhomes, and we were looking for ways that we could still meet the price point that we heard from the commission or the council that we needed to be at and make the project work by adding in some open space. So, I mean, we're trying to shove this and make it work, and we need the units as they're shown on the plan today.
Can you acknowledge that a couple of the elevations are kind of boring? Can you acknowledge that a couple of the elevations, they're beyond a little boring?
At the end of the day, it comes back to, it comes back to a pricing exercise, though, right? I mean, we heard at Plan Commission that, well, what would this look like if we added Hardy? Well, like, two years ago, when we talked about adding Hardy, we were talking about $6,000 to $10,000 a unit. So everything, every time we put gingerbread on a home, it is adding to cost. And so with our homes in the single-family portion of the community, we're going to offer five different floor plans. Each of those floor plans is going to offer four or five different elevations. The elevation that you're characterizing is boring, lacks some gingerbread, but at the end of the day, we're giving a buyer an option, right? If you want to sell your home at a peak value and you're going to stretch to get into one of our single-family homes, I don't want to tell you that you've got to pay $10,000 of extra value to have a front porch that you might not use. I want to be able to get you into that home at a price that meets your needs. And so we purposely have a variety of elevations for people who are interested in some more gingerbread on their home, but we've also got elevations for people who are stretching to get into this community and can't afford another $10,000 worth of upgrades on their home.
Did you just come up with gingerbread? That's the best term I've heard for it yet.
That's one we use pretty regularly.
I completely understand. Thank you for being honest about that. And one question first, I don't know if this is for city staff or not. Is this whole thing going to be third Ward as it comes in? Most likely. It is going to be carved up because the last time we had a development like this, it changed my word dramatically. And not that I'm going to vote to, you know, lose longtime supporters, but it will change.
I'm sure it will.
This would be Ward II and III unless we redistrict at some point in time.
Okay. I'm just saying, I think this will trigger that. It really will. So if the school district redistricts, I'm getting redistricted too. Thank you.
Sarah?
Now, I do have my hand up. Thank you so much for doing so much work and listening to feedback that we gave, feedback that Plan Commission gave. The 3D model, Alderman Chance said is right, really, it shows what it's going to look like in a way that I had not been able to visualize before. I like the way the townhomes look. Have you heard feedback that there are, like, have you tested the market? Are people interested in the townhomes and the single-family in this neighborhood, or is that still to come?
We've, it's sort of unique that we've got an existing storefront in Batavia. That storefront, we're only selling single-family homes. I would note that when we came into Batavia, I think prior projects had considered townhomes there. We really liked the single-family homes on that project, so we haven't, we haven't been talking about townhomes with people who are specifically coming into Winding Creek looking for a single-family home. So I don't know that we've got necessarily that direct feedback, but as part of a process, right? I mean, this is tens of millions of dollars that are being invested into your community, right? So Polte goes through a very vigorous process. Before we get to all of this process, they're doing market studies, they're talking to brokers in the market, they're doing extensive research about where are things selling and what is the feedback that you would give us about the local market and the buyers you talk to? So I haven't had those conversations, but those all roll up into very sophisticated packages that go up to a corporate office. The corporate office reviews those, and then they ultimately give us the money to come to you folks, put together the pretty drawings, and present the project on the hopes that we can go build it. So we've not, I wouldn't say that we've had direct conversations with Batavia residents about it, but through the mechanisms by which we study a project and write reports to validate the finances of a project, we've certainly had those types of conversations.
Thank you.
Honor?
Yeah, I have received a number of calls from people in the neighborhood about this, and so it drew me to do some research on the city's part here to determine how much of buildable land is yet going to be available on the west side of Batavia, say, west of Randall Road, that's going to have this dramatic impact. And I've given you all a copy of a map that's been prepared by our city staff and the Kane County Forest Preserve Commission. Now, what you have to appreciate is that the Kane County Forest Preserve Commission, which is the green colors on this map, tell us that this is going to be the largest forest preserve in Kane County, is going to be immediately to the west of Batavia. Right now, they've acquired about 1,600 acres out there that's now off the development rolls, so there will never be any more taxes paid on it, and there will not be any houses built on it. So you've got this very large area. And as you can see, we also imposed on the map all the school district boundaries, and this particular situation, the Keanan District 302 and the Batavia District, when you go out Main Street to Nelson's Lake Road, we kind of divide the land between the two school districts. So the Batavia School District won't be really gaining anything from there. Then you equate into this the Mooseheart development that the City Council did about now seven or eight years ago, and that basically did not allow for any single-family housing on the acreage all the way almost down to Mooseheart Road before we said they could start to build some townhouses. And so the number of new single-family homes that are going to be built in Batavia in the next 10 to 15 years in this area is almost nothing. It's not. If Mooseheart builds, when they build as they have agreed to, it's going to be 830 age-restricted living units with no children under 18 allowed to live there. So that removes any demand on school in that particular development. So I would tell you that this development and its location it is, and it's 32 acres, in comparison to the 1,600, and immediately is about two miles to the west of it, is, that's a major thing out there that is not going to generate any kids. So I would suggest that the Batavia School District is going to welcome the children in this particular district because there aren't going to be many more out there, if you put it all together, looking at the zonings that are now in place. And so I just think that we, as a community, this is a good one that's going to have a nice EAV to it. It'll be supportive of the school district. It's not all that many homes between this one and the one out on McKee Street that Polte is also building. They're bringing us a bunch of new assessed valuation with families that are going to be spending a lot of money in Batavia. And as you've already seen by the staff's report, the school district numbers have dropped 27% in the last couple of years as far as attendance. And now you've got this largest forest preserve in Kane County that's going to be kind of another feature that's going to be in the Batavia School District. So nobody should be able to get up here and say, this is going to overwhelm our school system, because it won't. The school district, quite frankly, in my opinion, needs this type of development at this location because they need the kids that are going to be coming out of it. We're going to have a lot of schools sitting there with nobody in it, and I think there may, I don't want to speak for the school district, but I think there may already be some evidence that some of that's already starting to take place. So I don't think we can use schools as something that we need to worry about here because there's, the map clearly shows you that it's all pretty well-developed and taken care of as far as who owns it. And, you know, someday, somebody will probably ask the question, why did the Kane County Board want to make this decision to buy 1,600-plus acres due west of Batavia? Well, I've asked the question, and they tell me, well, it's kind of central to Kane County, and it's near the tollway. And those are the answers that they give you. So we'll see where that one goes. But I just wanted everybody in the council to have this map that you can see that there is not going to be a big school problem out there at all.
Anybody else on the council?
I just had a quick question for Polte. Do you have a rough estimate of the value of the infrastructure that the city will be inheriting from this project?
Yeah, so normally, we would do like an engineer's opinion of probable construction costs, and so we would be able to back into something like that. We're at a preliminary engineering stage, so we don't do that quite yet. When we get to final engineering, we would be able to do that. I do, I guess, speaking to that point, though, I do have a slide that kind of correlates. Let me just get there real quick. We didn't talk about this, but with the mayor's comments and then the question you just asked, I can't tell you what the value of the infrastructure, really, the road and the water and the sanitary is, right? But we did run some property tax projections. This is obviously a snapshot of one type of tax revenue that's generated from the property. This doesn't include, you know, sales taxes is going to be generated by these residents, utility taxes, internet sales tax, all of those things. But, you know, as we talk about the school district or even just revenue in general for local government bodies, this development will generate annually over $2 million in tax revenue, of which approximately $1.4 million will go to the school district.
That about correlates with what I've calculated, so that helps. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate, as others have said, that you have been really good at listening to the concerns, going back to the planning board, that you guys spent so many hours in the commission meetings and just hashing it out there, so thank you for that. Couple comments and questions. One, as I'm looking at the map here, and I think you had mentioned this earlier, that you adjusted the lot sizes on Van Norwick to be a little bit larger. And I know there was some concerns from residents in that neighborhood about additional traffic for pedestrians on those sidewalks, but it looks like there's pretty much perhaps the same amount of driveways on the west side as there are on the east side almost on Van Norwick.
Yeah, I couldn't speak to the total number of driveways, but we did endeavor to kind of flip lots where we could so they were internally facing. So if you look at the top block, the northernmost block, you can see all of those driveways are onto Road A. You go to the southernmost block, which is Houston Street, all of those driveways are oriented internal. It's really that middle section where we've got a couple of homes that are on Van, that front onto Van Norwick. I would say from a project development standpoint, one of the things we focus on is we try to develop in clusters, and so one of the things we cluster is open space. And so by doing this with this kind of orientation, you see that all of those homes on Van Norwick back up to open space. So you don't have any back-to-back units, which is going to make those, well, they're smaller lots, right? They're roughly 6,000 square feet, I think. They don't have a neighbor behind them, right? They're going to look out on like a one-and-a-half, two-acre open space, and so they're going to have this big expanse in their backyard, so they're going to live nice and big. With respect to driveways, there's, I live a block from our elementary school. I have people from our elementary school block my driveway all the time. I've got little kids who've walked to the school. I mean, they cross driveways. It's part of, it's part of life, it's part of raising kids. You can't, we wouldn't have sidewalks if we didn't build homes with, that led to and from the sidewalks, right?
Absolutely, and I walk this neighborhood all the time because I live near there, and yeah, there's a lot of driveways, there's a lot of roads, and this, I'm, personally, I'm not concerned about the additional driveways on Van Norwick up that sidewalk, but just wanted to point out that it does appear that those lots are a little bit more spread out than in other areas of the Ashton Ridge subdivision. Another concern I had heard from residents was the potential impact on surrounding homes with the property value and the tax hike, and I don't know if somebody even on staff could discuss that, but that was some concerns like with other neighbors, that this would impact their property value, so.
So I would just note that, I mean, we do, I personally work on probably 5,000 dwelling units a year throughout the Chicago region. I've never seen a situation where an assessor said there was development next door to you, those homes are selling for more than your adjacent homes, so I'm those homes are selling for more than your adjacent home, so I'm going to immediately raise the value of your home. Assessors are focused on comps, and I think on average, they're going to look at and they're going to say, the homes adjacent are 80, 50 to 100 years old, let's call them. That's a major difference to the homes we're building. The homes adjacent to us are, you know, some of them are less than 1,000 square feet or 1,500 square feet. That's going to be a very different live than the homes we're building. So that would, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think, I don't think what we're doing here is a valuable comp, that an assessor is going to look at that adjacent neighborhood and say, oh, well, because these homes are selling more, we're going to automatically raise the price on your house. I don't think, I've never seen it work that way.
Thank you. I was just addressing that because that was some concerns I had heard. I really appreciate that you did include the ranch version, because I know there are people who are wanting to downsize in Batavia but want to stay in downtown Batavia area. And so I've had a lot of interest in that being expressed to me, so I really appreciate that. And let me just see if there was anything else. I think that's it, so thank you.
Abby?
I have three comments, questions. The first one is kind of following up on Dustin's comment and wishing that there could be some sort of a fiscal impact analysis done prior to approving this to know, or at least estimate based on previous or recent developments around here, knowing that single-family home developments generally do not pay for the infrastructure that they sit on. If all we're building is that, we're just digging ourselves into a bear hole, and I would like to see developments, especially in large swaths of land, few that we have left, see those building well for our city, not driving us into future liabilities that we don't have the ability to pay for on the existing land itself. I am one that will kind of mourn the loss of the mixed-use designation because of the more potential to build wealth and to add more increment on that piece of land. And maybe it'll break even. I would just like to know for sure, you know, instead of kind of guessing or just hoping that it would pay for itself. So that's the first thing. I could go through all three, if you want me to go through all three, if you want to address that, whatever.
I'm happy to. So I think that some of the dynamic has changed with residential development because you're now also getting internet sales tax from residential development when you increase those households. I think it's, when you run a model that's based on existing homes and just spreading a cost over existing homes, I think it's difficult because we're installing infrastructure here that the city's going to own. The city will have the liability for that infrastructure, and I guess to be clear, it's limited to roads, water, and sanitary. We will own all of the stormwater infrastructure. We will operate, maintain all of the stormwater infrastructure. But all of that infrastructure we're putting in has a very long shelf life. So you're going to have 10, 20 years before there is major investment in any sort of infrastructure improvements in this subdivision. I mean, you have residents who will be, residents who are necessary in order to support the business in your community. Without residential rooftops, we know that retailers don't come, right? And so I understand your point, and I can totally appreciate the concern that, you know, general consensus is residential doesn't pay for itself, but residential is absolutely necessary to generate the sales tax revenues that a community functions on. So I think it's almost not a fair way to even look at it because you can't have one without the other.
Exactly. I think we need more of the rooftops in order to support the businesses. So that's, the lower-density designation, the downzoning still has me, giving me a little bit of heartburn. And to your point about the infrastructure being replaced in 10 to 20 years, we have a full stock of 10 to 20-year-old infrastructure that we're trying to pay for now with new developments. And so instead of being able to pay for them with themselves, we're not going to, we are running out of land for new developments to pay for older infrastructure.
I guess, that's a great conversation. Like, I enjoy doing this, so I could stand up here and talk all day. But I think to the point, though, if you just add more density to a project, that doesn't automatically translate to more dollars, right? So you have to look at who are the residents that you're bringing into the community and how are they going to be accretive to the community? And so if I add, if I add a million-dollar home and I add $10,000,000 homes, how do those things shuffle out? What are my costs to the community having 10, $100,000 homes versus having a $1 million home? And we're not building $100,000 homes or $1 million homes, I'm just saying by way of example purposes. Here, we're providing a home product that frankly doesn't exist in this downtown area, right? We're building homes that are frankly going to be above where homes are selling in the market, and that's going to create a situation where you have higher-income earners who are able to spend more money downtown. If you look at successful downtowns, that is part of the formula. I look at, I was in downtown Aurora two days ago for a meeting. I look at downtown Aurora and I think, oh my God, the bones in this community. It's amazing. How much money has Aurora poured into their downtown and to what end? Right? They've given up on the casino downtown, they're moving it to the tollway. The bottom line is, they do not have a residential base in and around downtown that can support those businesses. They're entirely reliant on out-of-towners coming in to go to the Paramount, to go to the casino, and they're finding that those people aren't staying and spending dollars in other portions of town. You fix that here. You have people with disposable income, and I think the benefit is, you've got a little bit of both, right? You've got some more expensive single-family homes, you've got some less expensive townhomes, so it's a nice blend. And so you've got the density with the townhomes, you've got the higher incomes with the single-family homes, and I think those two things meld together, even though it's less dense, to give your downtown the type of support it really needs.
Okay, my second point is about the stormwater detention and the open space that's in the property. And the model in Batavia being that developer puts it in, the HOA owns it and maintains it. So the organization I work for happens to be the management company for a number of Pulte developments that had a number, that had a large amount of open space and detention, and in some cases, the Army Corps required them, that developed the development, to have an outside partner oversee and manage the open space in perpetuity so that a future HOA board that said, man, I really don't like this detention basin, we're going to mow it all down, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, we're not going to invest in it, and then it becomes a stormwater issue for the whole surrounding area, that that can't happen. So with it being on Wilson Street frontage, with it being, well, just necessary based on the storms that we're having, I know you mentioned last time that it would be a naturalized detention area, planted with native plants. There are, you know, certain contractors that can manage that and certain ones that can't. And like I said, HOA boards can flip-flop and invest or not invest. So with it being essentially located as it is and so visible, I would like some sort of an assurance, either that we put into the redevelopment agreement that there is some sort of a management contract baked into what the HOA can do and can't do, or there are certainly other models in other cities nearby that take ownership of all of the detention areas. And I was wondering if maybe Matt could kind of speak to that, his example in Montgomery, on how they do it, just to talk to these different.
So before Matt gets there, let me just say that, yes, there are absolutely different models. I would say that in most communities we work in, it is private ownership of the stormwater detention. I mean, your underlying concern, the first one we talked about, was, do we have the resources to maintain public infrastructure? Well, in this case, we're removing a public infrastructure burden from your plate, right? So I think that's, that can be seen as a good, it counters your first concern. In terms of being able to manage the stormwater basin, I would say, go look at some of our projects that we've done recently. I would say Meadow Ridge and Aurora, it's absolutely awesome, it's a townhome community, it's got a large wetland-bottomed basin, very similar to this one. And it just, as it's coming in now, I haven't been by it in the last couple of weeks, but I would imagine it's kind of coming back to life and just creates a really nice natural area there. And I mean, given that you've got a school immediately to the north, and then you've got the high school across the street, I mean, it creates some really cool opportunities where, like, you know, do you want to do some plaques out there to display and talk about the types of birds and type of wildlife, the types of plants, so that people understand these things? But to the long-term management, we absolutely build long-term management into our declaration. So the covenants, conditions, and restrictions are going to outline what the management should be. We will set up a contract so that the homeowners association, when we do the turnover, has a contractor onboard that is responsible for the development. Before we do the turnover, we will ensure that the basin is stabilized, right? So we'll go through a maintenance and monitoring plan, and we'll make sure that we've hit a quotient of plant material so that invasive species aren't taken over. And then I think the last component, and maybe the most important check, is that there will be a backup SSA. And so at the end of the day, that backup SSA gives all of the folks over there at the table the ultimate control. If they want to come out and they want to say, hey, listen, this stormwater basin is in poor shape, you haven't burned it, you haven't done what was necessary to maintain it, they can pull tax dollars just from this subdivision. Only these people who are not on top of maintaining it, and they can force, they can actually perform the maintenance using those tax dollars. So there are, there is a mechanism in place to make sure that we do maintain it and there's a backup mechanism in case somebody doesn't into the future that you can force them to.
How long did you say the contract was for, the maintenance contract that's in your declarations?
I don't know offhand, I can look that up, certainly. So just to get a high level of the way that we've set these up at Pulte, kind of like what Russ said, is we'll get them established to a certain standard per your code and per the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance, and then turn that over to the HOA that has a balanced budget, has a forecast, and has responsibilities. One thing that we, I think we probably can do is build into our CCNRs with the HOA that there's specific maintenance requirements for the basin, which is really backed up by the Kane County Stormwater Ordinance, but that it can't be amended from the CCNRs without your approval. I've done that in a few other communities. We'd be happy to do that. Another example that I will share, on the southern end of Kane County, I wouldn't pretend for a second to tell the city of Batavia how to do what you do, but we, one of the first questions that we ask in every community that I develop in is, you know, is the city going to be taking over ownership of the basin, or is that going to be an HOA responsibility? Every community so far has been an HOA responsibility. On the southern end of Kane County, the village made the decision 20-some years ago when development started, that every native basin would be owned and maintained by the village backed up by an active SSA that is charged back to the residents of just that community every year. What we've seen, what that community has seen over the last 20-some years, is a stabilization of those budgets and also exceptional stormwater management facilities. So that's my shameless plug. I appreciate you asking a question.
Can we get your name for the record, sir?
Matt Rowley.
Matt Rowley with Pulte Home Company.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like that amendment. And then my third one was some additional connectivity. I really appreciate the Plan Commission adding the pathway to connect the, connect the Road C or whatever it is to Houston Street. So in terms of walkability and bikability, trying to establish as much of a grid as possible is always something that I'm looking at when we're seeing some winding roads. If there was the ability to add connectivity, so one of the other things that I will mourn is, you know, the loss of commercial space, potential commercial space along Wilson Street, since that is our main drag, you know, to put in the detention basin, knowing that there might be redevelopment in the future that could go along that corner between, you know, of Van Norwick and Wilson Street, to connect down, you know, a path along there. Yes, exactly, thank you. To somehow connect that to the street so that folks could maybe access that in the future or access that without backtracking. And then likewise, up in the corner, in the northwest corner, to kind of go through Outlot E, I believe, and around and back out to McKee. When on foot, you're moving much slower, so any having to backtrack a block if you're going in a certain direction certainly is a deterrent to active transportation, so just wondered if that could be something that could be considered.
I'm going to say this without turning around, so my engineer doesn't, so I don't see his face. We will, we can definitely look at that. I don't know if either of those are feasible. We did discuss the southern one during Plan Commission a bit because it does cross a stormwater facility, but we, that's something that we would be open to looking at during final engineering. I just didn't have enough time to look at it.
Let me touch on two of those, those two things real quickly, though. The, I want to emphasize that that stormwater detention basin is very strategically located and needs to function that way. There are off-site flooding concerns that were raised by city staff when we started this process, and we have taken, we've taken measures with our stormwater in order to address that regional issue. It's not our responsibility, but again, we've worked with city staff, we've incorporated their concerns into the configuration of this basin, so it is critically important that we have that basin kind of surrounding those industrial properties. And so I think where we've looked at connectivity to the south there, that's been one of the sticking points, is that we know we've got to have that stormwater basin in that area, not just for us, but in order to address the flooding issues that have occurred at that Van Norwick and Wilson intersection. I would point out also that if you look in the area up here, it's not, this is where there was also a suggestion of a residential connection. So what's not apparent on this plan is that the neighboring property owner, so there's a single-family home on this property, unique situation. They have a garage that's tucked behind the house. The driveway that gets them to that garage is actually located on our property. We have the right to tear out that driveway, and then they would no longer be able to access their garage. That's not very neighborly. So we have, we have effectively moved all of our improvements over, and we have agreed with city staff that we're actually going to go out and on their behalf, we're going to pave their gravel driveway so that they still have access to their garage. So again, another example of how we've tried to be a good neighbor, but in doing that, right, it kind of eliminates some capacity to put additional pedestrian access in there because we're frankly giving that property. It's actually going to go to, I think it's going to stay with the homeowners association, but then I would note that there is a contemplation that that road could connect straight through in the future. So when this property, sorry, when this property develops, there are outlots configured around this curve, and the city could cause this road to come straight through. We've set up the entire subdivision to facilitate that. At that point in time, that road punches through, there would absolutely be a pedestrian connection with sidewalks as there are through the entire rest of the subdivision. So I would just, as we think about a pedestrian connection in that location, I would just caution that that pedestrian connection could end up having some negative consequences on that existing homeowner. Any other questions, Abby? Okay. And I would agree with you that that's one of the things I thought about on this development right from the get-go was that that gray area wasn't there to begin with, and the density wasn't there to give up the mixed-use density that could have been on the Van Norwick and McKee corner. So I kind of took the new section of it as being much more dense than the other, actually increase that availability of tax money to take care of the infrastructure in 20 years or to pay for old infrastructure that we have. So I like the fact that the density was added. I was also adamant that they had to have a first-floor master plan in one of their houses, and then, you know, if they could secure the property to the west and the south there, that had to have density with it. So I'm really happy to see that be part of this plan. I'm very happy that they worked with Plan Commission and got the things changed on that. You know, I've been here since '72, so I've seen a lot of things change there, and watching Furnace have shift changes and the amount of cars that came out onto the streets, and it was all handled and nobody complained about it. And now, you know, we're looking at daily less cars than people that worked at Furnace leaving throughout the day, at one time at a shift change. I mean, it literally was like what it was like leaving the high school every day, three times a day. So, you know, the traffic, I don't think will be a problem. It will develop its own patterns, people will get used to it. And hopefully, it really forces people to walk their kids to school or allow them to walk to school. I've fought for sidewalks in almost every ward in town to try to get that done so people get out of their cars, onto their feet, and get their kids to walk to school. I lived a mile west of, a little over a mile west of Gustafson, and I used to ride my bike every chance I got. So, and it was dodging semis on Main Street and McKee, trying to get away from peacocks and dogs chasing us, but it was fun. And it's doable, and people can walk to school.
and dogs chasing us, but it was fun and it's doable and people can walk to school. Every person that walks to school takes a car off the street, so that's the best thing we can do. Mark?
Yeah, thanks, Ellen. Yeah, I just want, I appreciate the changes you guys have made and the adjustments based on all the feedback you've gotten. So first and foremost on that, and Abby, I know you have some concerns, some desires on the, the mixed use, which potentially could have had retail in there. But I look at, on Wilson Street now, Wazio Orthodontics has built a beautiful facility and I think something like this might, at his facility and something like this, might start to encourage some additional redevelopment in that area. And I mean, something for us to talk about later about how we incentivize that and the things that we could do to, to make people want to redevelop over there some more. We do lose a little bit on Wilson with the, with the retention, but that retention, I mean, is probably done, is going to be beautiful to have that in that area. We're taking an area that, as long as I can remember, has just been a grass field that says no trespassing. So it's, seems like this is going to be much better for us in the long run. I know some of the traffic things, we've heard this over the years with different developments that go up, that it's like, oh, my gosh, it's going to increase traffic, it's going to increase traffic over the bridges. Yep, it does. And if somebody, if, if somebody builds, Mayor pointed out that there's not a lot left to build in Batavia, but if somebody were to build, if there was something large going west of Randall that existed, it would still increase the amount of traffic on Wilson because people want to get to the other side of town. We can have our second bridge arguments at another time, but I think that this is something that could actually enhance that area and bring some more amenities out to that area. Maybe not in the next five years. I mean, you, you have to start thinking, and I've talked about this before in strategic planning, we, it's 20, 30 years. It's things that, changes we make now that have a tremendous impact on, on our kids and their kids. So I'm in favor of this.
Anybody online? Hand up, okay. I think now, what time are we at? Take some public comment, try if we can not to repeat anything, try to keep it short and let us know what you're thinking and then I think we're going to discuss each one of these ordinances.
Hi, Bill McGrath, 407 Elm Street. I guess I'm going to have kind of a contrarian view here. I don't think this development serves the existing citizens of Batavia as a whole. There's been no discussion of the developer of how this development makes Batavia as a whole any better. It wants to build quickly, sell and leave. The fact is, and you can check this, as someone alluded to earlier, that single family developments do not pay for themselves over time in public services. That means tax increases. There's been no discussion when, when, when this is one of the last pieces of property in town about the demographics of this town and what it needs to honor the value we have of making Batavia welcoming and livable for people in all stages and circumstances of life. By the way, a 1,700 square foot, two-bedroom home that they're building on McKee Street starts at $470,000. Hardly a project, hardly a product that addresses downsizing. Hardly a project where many Batavians could hope for their children to return. Plus, if this project owns the stormwater system, there will be more expense to those residents on top of paying taxes and mortgages. The vote of the Plan Commission, four to three, was hardly a resounding vote of confidence. I also find it funny that the developer is asking for relief. Relief, one definition is the act of removing something unpleasant. Well, what was unpleasant is the municipal code. So the side yard setbacks in the townhomes are diminished by one-third, which means less sunlight and green space. The FAR increased by 27% from .51 to .65, which, all that does is increase the building envelope, which means the ability to build more square footage. How does this relief contribute to our citizens' safety and quality of life? This relief is to build more houses, larger houses in contravention of not just the comprehensive plan, which is a whole different story, but the municipal code, the our ordinances. And I'm glad they went through all the time and expenditure of all these plans, but it would have been a lot easier if they had come to you in the first point with a plan that met all the codes and then argued for something better. Polte builds more than 700 homes. Maybe that's the Chicago area. The production output of Polte Homes in 2023 was 28,894 new home deliveries. For 2023, Polte Group generated nearly $16 billion in revenues and net income of 2.6 billion while returning, while delivering a return on equity of 27%. Why do we allow our codes to be changed so a publicly traded corporation can make more money? I resent the threat of what the current master plan shows for the property. The development of the property is under the city's control. I resent the implication that the downtown homes are less important than other areas because they cost less. I agree with the changes that they have made, but let's not forget that some of the changes were because they proposed a plan in contravention of our own codes. I really don't care about a multi-billion dollar company's metrics. If they need to make a larger return while conforming with our codes, let them go back to the sellers and renegotiate. It's that simple. Thank you.
Martin Byrne. I live on North Avenue and I go past this site on Van Norwick twice a day to get to Batavia High School and, and from, I've long wanted to see something be built here, especially on the south end of McKee Street. I have no problem with development, with housing being built, especially denser housing and townhomes. I think these are very good things, but I don't think that this plan is the right way to do this. My main concern is about the affordability of this housing. Last year, the, or in the last year, the medium sold price of the house, of a home in Batavia was $400,000, which is up 6.7% since only last year. That data is according to Rocket Homes. And this is, to me, a problem, especially when you look at the trends that this is going in. We need to be a community that is accessible to more people. I also, you look at 42% of people with a 60510 zip code is under the age of 35. And as a young person, I can certainly attest to the, the very big problem that people from my generation and people a bit older than me are having when it comes to, when it comes to owning a home and just securing housing in general. You know, we talk about all these great people at Batavia High School and some of the great things that they've done, and I think these are people that we want to keep in this community, to contribute to this community and to, to raise their own families here perhaps. I also briefly want to say, because the school district has been brought up in this discussion, that the school district has not said anything that they are on board with this. They decided that they would, they would have land or they would have cash instead of land when they had that option, but even when they had that, that, when that board had the, this, had a discussion about that decision, there were concerns. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. Thank you.
I live at 555 North Van Norwick. I have two small kids. My little girl's going to be going to kindergarten next year and I watch traffic on that street all the time. So I personally can say that I feel that's my biggest concern. I don't know, I know someone mentioned earlier lowering the residential speed limit and I think that's a great idea. Also, I don't know if we can incorporate speed bumps somewhere along those roads because I do watch people fly down those streets and it is very scary knowing that we're going to have this, you know, these high-density homes and we're going to have just a huge influx of traffic and people that are commuting in and out of this neighborhood. I do know that obviously we're trying to get families to be walking their children to school and that will hopefully help with the traffic concerns, but I know, I know that realistically, the increase is coming and it's just gonna really change the whole neighborhood. So, I mean, I think that's one of my biggest concerns, along with the safety of having the homes so close to the school. And I do really love that we're kind of working on, that Polte has proposed, I don't know, I think they put a fence, which is great, but a wrought iron fence is not going to provide a lot of privacy for the students outside playing during recess and, you know, there will be a lot of people in that new development. I just, I have a lot of concerns about the, the student's safety while they're outside playing and just coming and going before and after school.
Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Tom Lalan. I live at 411 North Avenue and I'm on the Plan Commission and zoning board, so I'm one of the three that voted against the project. And it's not that I'm anti-development. I actually think that mixed use is exciting, it sounds, doesn't make sense at this site and there was really consensus on that point. So I'm, I'm not against the project, but I just don't think it's quite right yet for what we can do here. This is the highest density, single-family housing project we've done in Batavia. And on top of that, as Bill mentioned, they're asking for several variances to increase the density beyond that. I'm especially concerned of, excuse me, along Van Norwick, where the houses, you know, obviously front on an existing street with existing residents across that street. I think we can make a better transition overall, smaller houses and/or larger lots. Again, at least in the immediate area of Van Norwick, as it transitions back into the property, then a little increase in density would be appropriate. We talked about affordable housing. That's not really our purview to talk about that at the Plan Commission meeting, but I've heard a lot of talk about affordable housing in Batavia. This is not affordable housing. When you talk about the smallest house starting at $470,000, I think there's, they can get a lot more creative in, in being able to develop a project that includes some homes, maybe townhomes, maybe ranch townhomes, which don't exist in this project, that could be more affordable and, and bring that price point down. I just think we don't need to rush into it. I think we need more time to get this right and just because we can do it doesn't mean we should. I talked about opening up the project. The consolidation of the detention areas actually increases the density within the housing components of the project. So even though the overall density may sound like it's lower, it's really pretty high, especially when they ask for the variances to put the townhomes even closer together. I wanted to see an opening at the north end of the housing development on Road A, directly across from the lot that extends to the school district, so that it could open up into the detention area to the south there. I don't know if I can show that with the pointer on here, but up in this area. And then I had asked for pathways through the project. They came back with a very nice improvement of putting the pathway through the townhomes, actually reducing the, the total townhomes by three. So that was a nice amenity that was added, but I also asked for pathways down to Wilson and then also adding amenities in the way, in the form of benches. They, they added two benches in this location, nothing else. So these are beautiful outdoor, open spaces that could be enhanced with some limited recreational components in the way of additional benches and pathways. So that's my points. Thank you.
Next.
I just have one question for the consul and maybe he can tell me. Am I correct in saying that previously a developer came in to develop this property?
I have not heard of anything since Simmons closed.
Eric, you know, I thought there was a developer that came in many, you know, a long time ago and the consul elected to turn that developer down because of the density was too great. Anyway, my point is here, the density on this is really great. And like Mr. McGrath said, it seems to me like the consul is always bending the rules on the established order or the engineering plans to get a developer in there. So I think my own belief is that you shouldn't bend the rules, just get a developer in there. Thank you.
My name's Kermit Carlson. I reside at 1150 and 1170 McKee Street, immediately adjacent to the west of that area. Well, about 40 years ago, one gentleman in this room said that affordable housing in Batavia is dead. That was a while ago and when it was said, the reason was a development was proposed further west on McKee Street, which is now Georgetown. If you look at Georgetown today, it's relatively low density. It has a large setback from McKee Street. Now, there's, when proposed, it seemed unreasonable, but it's very practical. On the north edge of any house, you're going to have a virtual dead area of growth, including the green space. It turns to mud. Now Georgetown, because of the berms and the scaping, has turned to a very nice green space down McKee Street. When you turn the corner at McKee Street to head further east, you're going to be faced with a series of three sets of four units and they're going to back up with trees. The trees are close spaced to two-story buildings. They're not going to grow. There's not sufficient sunlight there. Quite simply, it's not fitting with the rest of McKee Street. Now, the proposal from my family, when we wanted to build affordable housing out there, very similar to what's built in some areas of Warrenville by Pascanelli. In fact, they were the builder at the time that we were promoting to develop in that particular area. We were looking at houses in the 125 to 145 mark, which I would guess today would probably be 300, okay? The reason that it was turned down is because the density was entirely too high to fit any of the models for the zoning in the city of Batavia, which, by the way, has not changed significantly, except for this idea of putting an R8, which leaves a little bit over, what, 6,000 square feet per unit with a little bit of green space on either side. My objection to the, the particular spot is along McKee Street because that is radically different than the than the density anywhere along McKee Street as you come in off Randall Road into Batavia. It's one of two or three major streets coming into Batavia as people come to visit our town. So immediately, at the end of the, my property, as you turn into that area, you're going to be met with what probably will not be a successful viable green space and an extremely high-density area. And I'll guarantee you that when it comes to pathways for the kids that everybody's been talking about, they come through and find their own ways. They make their own halls. It's going to be just a sieve right through there and it's not going to be nice pathways. Thank you very much.
I think now we'll go back to the agenda and we've got the four ordinances, go through one at a time, discuss those, and then we can vote on them. Tony?
I just have a comment before. The, I'm concerned about the density of the single-family homes, eighth-acre lots. I find it interesting in this model here that the townhomes are shown there, the buildings are shown, but on the lots, it doesn't show because I think it would be, it would show a lot more density. Dan, you pointed out that other model that was put up here.
3D one.
I noticed that. That was a little bit of a deceptive model because they were all single-family homes, or I'm sorry, single-story with gable roofs, where all the other neighboring houses were two stories with flat roofs, making it look, if we wanted to see what the density really looked like, I think we should see the property lines, along with the buildings of all the properties around. So I just, I want to point that out because I think that was a little deceptive, that you saw that model and thought, oh, this is a very dense. If you walked that, you would see how dense, it's more dense than anything we've got.
Mr. Peebles, who was just up at the, two people ago. Mr. Peebles, are you still here? The units in my cul-de-sac are the size of regular houses. It's five townhouses sliced up. It just looks like a large house. I've got seven buildings on my street. I would have expected seven houses like that, so it's gonna look the same. We're just cramming it together.
I'm talking about the single family.
Yeah. And I think the difference maybe why they didn't do that is there's different floor plans, there's different houses that are going to go on every one of those, so you don't know exactly which ones are going to be there.
You look at the model, they were all small, little homes compared to the rest of the neighborhood that showed. If we go back to, can you go back to that slide?
So you're saying the elevation of the model is the lowest?
In comparison to the surrounding?
Yeah, that one. So I find this deceptive, to show all these little, single-story homes with gable roofs in a dark color and then all the other neighbors around there show much bigger houses with flat roofs, but there's no property size there. My point is that it's not as, the density didn't go down as much as you think it did. And the single-family homes, from where the bigger homes on those lots. The houses got smaller, but so too did the lots get smaller.
Can I just interject real quickly? I just point a clarification. This is actual 3D modeling software, so we've picked up using GIS, all of the homes and structures in the community. And what we've input is the two-story homes that we would be building. So when you're characterizing what we did as being dishonest.
No, I didn't say dishonest. I said it's, the model is a little deceptive.
The model uses two-story homes, not single-story homes, just to be clear.
What I want to get here is the far west part, where you got the line there, immediately to the west of that, those are apartments. I used to live there, those, the Green Meadows. I paid $1,100, by the way, back in the early 2000s. I thought I was overpaying back then and they're at $1,900 right now, the same unit that I used to live in. And I could tell you what happened on Glee last, Glee last night or Law and Order, because I could hear through the walls. Those are tiny little apartments. They do look big, I get that. But if you look at the far eastern part, those are mixed industrial uses. And those are very large buildings compared to fairly small homes. And if you look at the...
He said they used GIS for this, so.
I, and actually, I almost bought one of the houses there next to, was at the woodworking lodge. It was very close to buying house there. That was one of the smaller houses on that block there.
I just know a two-story, single-family home on an eighth-acre lot is quite dense.
It is.
It is quite dense. And so I'm just pointing out, that's the issue I have.
And I'd have done a block away from that, Tony, and had a 58, I think it was 58 feet wide, was the lot. Fairly enough to plant flowers on one side of the house from my neighbor's driveway to the other side of my driveway, there was no room. It was nice because you could mow it in about 15 seconds.
It depends on, okay, so I keep going back to mine because it's the only thing I know. Same builder, Town and Country Homes, 92, 93, built the same product in St. Charles. You see it on, going down East Side Drive, right, on your right-hand side? Only difference is they got like two dozen, two dozen of them. You cannot tell one unit from the other at all there. The exact same thing. The thing we did right here in Batavia is we at least cut them off in fives. So it kind of spread the thing out. It gave us the sensation of open space. I feel like the neighborhood over at Georgetown, because we are pretty spread out, there's just way more spread out. But what would you change?
I think that the last time when we saw it was all single-family homes. My objection at the time was those lots are too small for the size of the house. It creates more density. So I still, the issue hasn't been alleviated because the house got smaller, but so did the lots get smaller. And so that density there is a concern I have.
Can we go back to that slide that had the density numbers to show what the neighbor, what the different neighborhoods were density-wise per acre? I mean...
Can I just, Tony, is it, is it something that you would not be interested in buying and maintaining, a smaller lot size? Because that's what it really comes down to, is some people don't want a big yard. They don't want to have to spend the money to put chemicals on the yard. They don't want to have to maintain it. They want to take that additional money that they have, that they're not having to pay somebody to do it or take care of it themselves, and use it here in the community. And when you drive around, Batavia has many different lot sizes for their homes and sizes on there. I'm looking at a comparison of some of the houses. I live in a duplex. When I put my duplex next to my other house, it's right in line with the price seam for the townhomes. I probably have more...
Answer the question, no, I'm not considering buying it. I'm not making a decision based on what I want. I'm basing the decision what I think is best for Batavia.
I understand that.
My opinion is, to have, our issue before was we had two bigger houses on two smaller lots and we still have that in this case. So I didn't see the improvement. The difference with the townhomes, I'm not as opposed to that, to having that different use for, on the property, but I just, it didn't alleviate my concern from before that the size of the house was too big for the size of the lots. And that's still the case, so that's...
For the community or for you? I'm just trying to...
For the community, for what I think should be in Batavia.
But I don't think all Batavians feel that way.
I understand that, but there are some that do.
And I ask you...
I need to stop this right now so we can let Chris finish with what he wanted to ask.
I was just going to point out that, I mean, if you look, I've lived in these neighborhoods all my life, too. I lived right on South Jefferson Street. And it's the old grid pattern in all those neighborhoods. And if you look right, bottom right-hand corner there, I mean, 115 units, you got the 4.42 density. It's the exact same amount as the 73 units being proposed in the new area. The other one's a little bit more dense, but that's because there's townhomes in that area, in terms of the other portion of the new development. So it's exactly the same amount of density as its neighboring property, which has been there for 100-something years. Same old neighborhood that people keep on buying and living in.
Yeah, I agree. I think after seeing these numbers and seeing that there's a lot of lots over there that are under 6,000 square feet, actually, yes, it's a smaller home and, but there are very small lots that are in that, in that area and I don't have an issue with it. And I think one of the things that it's, it was brought up, is this good for Batavia as a whole? How is this improving Batavia as a whole? Well, it's bringing something to Batavia that doesn't exist right now. And I think that's beneficial to us in the long run. And some of that could be people moving out. And it was, it was mentioned, and this is, we talk about affordable housing. We already know that affordable housing is not going to go there. It just, and your definition of affordable housing is, it's a bit of a misnomer, because it depends on what do you mean by affordable housing? Do you mean low rent? Do you mean based on the average income of Batavians or the average income of King County? Because it still ends up being something around the lines of $2,400 a month is what you could afford for housing as affordable housing. Frankly, I don't necessarily find that as affordable. I think the affordable housing is stuff that we're going to put into our downtown area, directly downtown. Apartments that'll come, that'll be in the form of a five, maybe six-story, we'll have that argument in the future, apartment building that allows for an ultra-high density, that allows for a builder to be able to do something and make their profit, because nobody's coming in here and doing this as a donation to the city, to, hey, here's free apartments, just not going to happen. So this is something that brings wealth directly to the downtown area. They did mention, if you want people here spending money, then you got to have a place for those people that want to spend money to live. So it's, we could sit there and wait, you know, 20 years and maybe the ideal thing comes along, but in the meantime, we lose an opportunity to not do something. And we've missed out on opportunities in the past and I don't want to keep on missing out on opportunities.
I should probably ask you this offline, but would you approve of my subdivision
today? You think it's too dense? Just curious.
I'm not so familiar with your subdivision.
Mill Pond, right behind the Menards.
Yeah, and that's, they're, those aren't single-family homes.
They're condo townhouses.
Yeah, that's a, that's a whole different, that's apples and oranges.
Well, I mean...
I just spoke specifically about the single-family portion there. And that's, and I'm raising the concern that my, the same concern I had the last time is still there. And that's, I'm bringing it out and that's why I'm not supportive of it, so.
Listen, I guess I, what I'm trying to think through is what harms does that cause, having buildings that take up a significant portion of the lot? I know light is one of them, but is it, is it fire accessibility? Is it...
Green space?
Just green space? Aesthetic preference or...
Yeah, that too, yeah. You know, there's, it's, they will look like townhomes. They will, because they're so close together.
Abby?
I guess I would say, to argue with Mark, and he's not here anymore, that it's, it doesn't offer something different enough, I don't think, that we don't already have. I mean, the smaller, smaller yards, yes, is different than the next-door subdivision. But I just feel like with the last big tract of land, with it being in proximity to our downtown, I, it, it doesn't hit the affordability or the accessibility notes for me. I think it feels very 90s tract home development. It just feels, it doesn't feel forward-thinking in terms of the trends for housing affordability with younger people, what younger people are looking for, younger people without kids are looking for. I worry, and I know we brought this up in strategic planning, and I'm hoping that a more comprehensive discussion is coming about our mix of housing and our diversity of housing options, that I don't think we have a diversity of housing options. I think we have a plethora of single-family homes with three to four bedrooms and two to three-car garages and we don't have a lot of options for anything else and any other price points besides the 400 to $500,000 range. This doesn't, I am not in a rush. I don't want to feel like we're wasting opportunities, but I think a more holistic discussion about the property, not the plan. I also really wish we would be more proactive in kind of having these conversations before we're, you know, given like a yes or no decision. It's a more of visioning outside of a developer, you know, looking at us when we're talking about it, kind of a thing. So it doesn't, it doesn't hit the right notes for me, so that's why I don't support it.
Yeah, you had your hand up?
This has been like a really complicated discussion and I just, I think everybody's bringing points of really great value. Tony, to your point, like, I think there is a lot of green space with the stormwater basins that is just kind of built into the lot, so that I'm less concerned about that. If this was something like One North Washington being plopped down on this property, I would have a lot of concerns and I would be feeling what you're feeling right now, for sure. I also feel like the houses are kind of like tucked away, like as I'm looking at this map, you know, the ones off of Wilson Street, they're tucked behind both the basin and then the other white industrial buildings on Wilson there. So you don't even see those ones. And then the ones on Van Norwick, those are actually slightly larger lots. So the, the really high-density, single homes are actually kind of tucked into their own neighborhood that doesn't really impact the rest of Batavia visually, in my opinion. And they're hidden behind the stormwater basins. I do agree that we, we need to continue talking in the future about affordable housing and diversity and how can we get more diverse lots and, but I, this is an incredibly huge location and I think though, those conversations are going to come with smaller lots, like I'm thinking even the one right off of Main Street that needs to be developed at some point, right at Van Norwick in Maine. I think this does give opportunity for continued growth in our downtown. I've heard from a lot of people who live west of Randall that they don't actually come downtown Batavia. They've lived there for years and they don't shop and eat in our downtown. They go up and down Randall Road. They very rarely come to our small businesses west of Randall. So this is a, a large group of people who would be walking distance to downtown Batavia and yes, they're equal distance to Randall Road, but you know, they could also maybe meander downtown. So I think it's kind of the chicken and the egg situation here. Do we build this, hope for more growth, hope for more money, to give us more opportunity to do further growth and other developments in other part of town? And that's just kind of where I'm on the fence with some of this, but that's where my mind is.
I would say at that point, I do definitely agree about the issues of affordable housing and recognize the limits of this plan, but I would also argue that this, for one, just in terms of where the real estate market is right now, new developments, these costs aren't particularly like, you know, unreasonable compared to other areas, other properties in the area. Because with a new development, you have a lot of fixed costs that you have to cover, so to make that a profitable venture, it's generally going to be about these values. But what we see here does provide, I would think, the next increment of development for this region. It is slightly denser than the surrounding neighborhoods, but not catastrophically so. It's something that, it will be a change, but it won't be as big of a change as something like One Washington Place here would have been. And for this area, especially due to its proximity to a school, I would think this is an appropriate style of development that could help improve the vibrancy and economic marketability of our downtown, as Leah was saying. So I definitely share a lot of concerns. I would love to see a mixed-use development here, but I think there are still avenues of development in the area that could happen, especially on some of the industrial corridors there. And I think if we do want to start tackling that affordability issue, it's going to be a much broader discussion about how to bring about smaller, you know, incremental developments in town, which are going to be throughout our town rather than on one specific lot or area. So I do plan to support this, but while acknowledging... to support this, but while acknowledging the concerns that a number of us have here. So.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I'm definitely for this. I think it looks like a great development. Good, good work, guys. Everyone brings up great points, though. I mean, there's, there's no question. There's, you know, I like mixed uses, mixed use ideas for for different purposes. I don't think for this property, but I, you know, mixed use fan. But, you know, I think where I get confused is when people talk about the affordable housing here in Batavia. And me, just personally, you know, I pay attention to the housing market daily, mainly because Zillow sends me 85 emails a day. But, I mean, it's, I hate to say it, it's just not an affordable town right now. This market is insane. I mean, there aren't that many affordable places, right? Which is why many people are renting now and things like that, which isn't ideal either. We want people to own their homes. So and I haven't heard anyone put any parameters around what affordable is, right? And kind of to Mark's point, it it's a mute point unless we put a number to it, right? If we say, okay, there must be properties that are 250 K or lower, which, again, if you look at mortgage on a $250,000 home today, today's interest rate's not affordable. I mean, it's it's expensive to live. So and we have a great community, which, you know, thankfully, for the folks who live in the community, their property values have risen and and has afforded them to do certain things. So, you know, and I think this is only going to help to raise those property values again. But to the gentleman's point here, it's not going to be an immediate all the neighbors rate. I think it's it's a start to a larger thing that creates more buzz around Batavia that that then, you know, increases the want for people to live here, increasing value. So I'm definitely a vote yes. I think we've, unless somebody else wants to talk, I think we're ready to button it up, or see where people stand.
I agree. Let's vote.
Anyone else wouldn't care to speak on this on the council? I think we'll move through each one of the ordinances here now, and we'll vote on those. So 9A would be ordinance 2024-35, mending the land map use or land use map with a comprehensive plan. Does anybody have any comments on either any of these as we go through? Just stop me, and we'll discuss them there. Now, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2024-35, mending the land use map of the comprehensive plan.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Beraza.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Keepa.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
No.
Uwe.
Aye.
Saran.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Right, then I'll make the motion that we recommend ordinance 2024-36, amending the official zoning map to rezone property to the R1H and R3 district to add a planned development overlay district to the official zoning map.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call.
Beraza.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Keepa.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
No.
Uwe.
Aye.
Saran.
Aye.
And vocal singer.
Aye.
That is 12 to 14.
Next up would be Resolution 2024-066R, approving the preliminary plat Vashenrich subdivision. Motion to move that to council.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call.
Beraza.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Beck.
No.
Keepa.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
No.
Uwe.
Aye.
Saran.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
That's 12 to 14.
And the last one, make the motion that we recommend a council resolution 2024-67R, notice of decision for tree preservation. This is the first development that we've done with the tree preservation ordinance. So we'll make sure we follow that one closely and get all the trees back. So motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call.
Beraza.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Keepa.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Uwe.
Aye.
Saran.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
So that's 14.
All right, and that one is done. And we look forward to seeing you come in and pulling permits. That'll be on the next council agenda, the first Monday in first Monday in May. Awesome. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Alan?
Yes.
Can I make a recommendation that we move items number 13 and 14 to a future agenda?
Second.
Yeah, we could do that. That's that's fine. Neither one of those are going to go anywhere quick, because I know they're not even going to do any readings on any of the stuff we're talking about here till, I think it's the second week of either late in the first week or the second week of May. So we will.
You want to make a motion?
I think you did, and somebody already said.
You just did. We got a motion. Motion by Lehman, and second by vocal singer, to push items 12 and 13.
No, 13 and 14.
12, 13?
No, 13 and 14.
13, 14. Wow, I drew the bracket around the wrong one.
12, 13, 14.
No, 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 no. We need to talk about 12 tonight. Sorry. I'm not going to let that one go.
There's people who've been.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that motion carries. Okay, we'll then move on to item 10, which is Resolution 2024-71R, authorization to execute a contract with Swallow Construction for Carriage Crest. Andrea?
Hello, I'm used to taking up all the time. This time, faulty, I hope to be quick. Carriage Crest, I think this has been a long day coming. We opened up bids last week, and I was a little nervous, but we got some great prices. We had four eligible bids. And based on the budget items that we had, unfortunately, we were not able to do the alternate one, which was an extension of Water Main from Wobonzie to Republic. But we are doing it from replacement of Water Main from the intersection of Timber and Wobonzie to, or Timber and Shabana, sorry, to Wobonzie. So we're doing that first section and hoping to budget for the second half next year. So that is what that alternate bid number one was. And I've already contacted the contractor Swallow out of West Chicago and have had, although we have not worked with them personally, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from other surrounding municipalities. And they're looking forward to moving forward and thinks that we can have groundbreaking with material on site in June. And our construction date is in October, mid October, we would have completion. That is all pending the availability of some of the larger items like the lift station and such. But this last week, we finished up the tree removal, which was a separate contract with Homer. There are still some logs out there. They did remove the machinery, but it has definitely gotten some fresh air out there. I know it's a stark change, but I'm very hopeful for what it can look like in the future. So it's taken a lot of time, patience, energy for everybody involved. So I'm glad to present this and that this came in underneath the engineer's estimate as well. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. I think it's pretty self explanatory. We are working on revising the plans with V3, just to get a four construction set that will show the connections and stop in the start point of that alternate one with the Water Main. Those should be completed by next week, and then we'll post those to the website. So all the residents can take a look as well, and I will notify them via email as well. So.
Any immediate feedback on the trees at all?
I have received complimentary, and then I've also received, this is a lot more than that was originally proposed, but I just it was what we had approved. And obviously, we haven't planted anything back. That'll take time. But those were the only two feedback emails that I received.
Groundbreaking in October is what we're looking at?
We're having the groundbreaking, like to put shovel in the ground, sorry, I was saying June, but finish hopefully should be October.
The reason I mention that is I had spoken with the group that was most concerned about flooding, and the group that was concerned about flooding and trees. They had talked about having council come out and have chili. And I said, it's a little hot for chili. It'd be nice to have a chili cook off at this property in October when we're done with the thing. If anyone has any recipes and they're listening tonight, I would love to have chili with everybody. This has been a long time coming, since like almost my entire service on council, working on this project, when there were years that people didn't believe there was flooding happening out there, to a ground swell, literally, no pun intended, of people. And I just want to say thank you for all the work that you have done. You have taken a lot of hits and been out there many late nights, and even out there on the pads of people's driveways and going above and beyond. Thank you so much for everything that you've done to get this project to the end.
Well, there's also, there's other people in the room as well as.
I know there are quite a few people. And we could talk all night about all the hard work that everyone here here does, and it is much appreciated. I know you've just been on the firing line quite a bit and had to take the microphone. And you got some extra flack for it. But thanks for sticking by us. Thank you, the rest of staff as well, too, for all the hours they put in. There are people who are terrified when it says it's going to have a 10% chance of rain in this town. And they are my residents of my ward. And people are going to sleep better when this project is done.
Yeah, I did have one comment or concern with the rain, like, are you guys going to have to get the pumps out there? But it wasn't enough. You know, we have been monitoring it was while they were in there working. So we've been out there. Scott Haynes has been instrumental with the removals and watching the contractor as well with his staff. So we're very aware of this, the current situation and what is out there.
Thank you.
Lucky you echoed the thanks for staff and everybody that's worked on this. I will say, when we get to the end of the, towards the end of this, I will want to know what the budget, where the budget's at, because if there's any extra money for trees, we're going to use it. We're going to make sure.
We'll have to talk to Peggy.
We go above and beyond. Yeah, I know. But we get to make the decisions on the money. So we're going to talk about that at the end. If there's ways to do anything else above and beyond, if we have savings in other parts of the project, I'd like to put it back in to the project.
Yeah, and I know.
That extra effort upfront with this one.
We did plant them per the future grow up, you know, the growth chart of what the spacing of where you want them so that they have optimal growth. So we would have to look at that as well. And I know the park districts, both of them did have additional trees put on their properties as well. So it will help enhance the overall neighborhood.
I would look for a motion to recommend a council.
Second.
Right, that was Sulfah and.
No.
Chanzet, Ayazi. Chanzet.
Of course they have it.
And Ayazi then. Okay, I'll get it right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. And we can put on a consent agenda. We know what's happening. The residents know what's happening. And we're happy that it's happening.
And emails will go to the residents, and we'll keep the project website up to date once we have a schedule with the contractor. Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to item 11, which is ordinance 2024-28, mending 2024 wages and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees.
Good evening. This is the, I guess you'd say, the last step in the conversation that you guys have already had regarding the business analyst position. Just quickly going back, back during the budget season, the IT department made the proposal to add, I think at the time they were calling an application analyst. We are, we've adjusted and called, based on looking out and at some comparable job descriptions, we've renamed it business analyst, but same type of duties was discussed during the budget process and then at the beginning of the year. So at this point, this here is the last process in adding that position to the wage and salary ordinance. We have reviewed, the attached job description has been attached and created for this position, as well as we reviewed, I've reviewed wage and salary information in regards to comparable communities and positions. And that would be placed in pay grade 14, which is actually what was budgeted, which is what Howard had budgeted for the year. So it is within the budgeted amount. So we can ask, answer any questions. If everything looks good, then we would request that we bring it to city council for approval, and which would then allow the recruitment process to start.
Comments? I know we've talked about this several times before. Okay, and I'll look for a motion to send to council ordinance 2024-28, amending the 24 wages and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees.
Move.
Second.
Malay and Uwe. I heard that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Now we get to our marquee decision of the night. Discussion of events on North River Street and the layout. Thank you all for waiting through everything else tonight. You want to start?
Sure. Just to set up the discussion there, I'd like to thank the business and building owners and patrons of those businesses who've been so patient tonight, waiting for this discussion. As you know, over the last several years, we've been trying out different things. During COVID, we closed the street altogether. During that period of time, we decided to apply to Illinois Department of Transportation for a one way there so that we could be in control of when we close that street. And our construction project got off a little bit late last year. And so one of the things that we did was move some of, I'll call it the furniture that was on that street, the planters, the benches and things like that to create a one way lane. One of the things to discuss is, I don't think that that is, it's no longer necessary to have those things out. And have heard from businesses and people who use the street that in some ways, it seems to create a little bit of danger having those things out. Main Street would like us to put things back where they belong. It will make the layout of the farmer's market, both the Saturday farmer's market and the new Wednesday night farmer's market, a little bit easier to set up. So that is one of the things is the position of the furniture and whether we can put that back in its original place. The second items have to do with events. And in the evening events, we experienced the situation where there were so many people on the street that the businesses that were hosting the event weren't necessarily had the opportunity to serve all of those individuals who were attending the events. Eventually, I think maybe because of that, people started bringing coolers with their own alcoholic beverages in them. And there wasn't any, you know, delineation of who was the participants in the event and who was just, you know, hanging out outside that perimeter. So wanted to have some discussion this year about whether we could, for events, set up a perimeter where those individuals who are sitting inside of this perimeter are being served by the business. of this perimeter are being served by the businesses, whether it be one business or we've got a couple of businesses on that street that are going to be collaborating on events so that we can delineate who are the patrons who are attending that event and then to enforce our ordinarily rule, ordinary rules of, you know, we can't just bring alcohol from home and, and sit there and consume that. Because even from the standpoint of the businesses, I don't think that's really serving the businesses if, you know, these people aren't buying things from those businesses. Those businesses are incurring fees from their entertainment that they bring and they should realize the upside of that in consumption of the products that they're selling. And then also, you know, just to talk about, now that the one-way has been completed, I imagine that we can put some of those, the barricades that need to be set in, in place to close the street so that the street only needs to be closed during events. I think last year, we had an application for events that ran from Tuesday through Sunday. And so that area was virtually closed for all but Monday and through Tuesday, end of day. So now that we've got the one-way, I think that when we have events, we can just have the organizers of those events, set those barriers in place at the beginning of their event and then move them to the side at the end of the events. And then for there to be the expectation of whatever, you know, refuse that is, that accumulates from those events, that there's receptacles for those and that the street gets cleaned up after those events. But those, so those were the two areas to be discussed, the furniture on the street and then some of these parameters having to do with the events. Alderman Lancy.
Yeah, just a quick note, if you're not done yet. I would say let's really look, and I know they're expensive. I can't believe they're this expensive, but let's look at those ballards that drop into the ground because number one, you know, you hate to bring it up, but there's crazy people in this world and there's a whole street before that, that you can run up to. I would really like if we have events that we have barriers that are rated to stop vehicles. Not necessarily something someone can just walk over and sit down. I do appreciate the ease of that and the cost effectiveness of it, but I think it's, and it's a really nice touch just to, you know, be able to hit the button and they're up and they hit the button and they're down. But they are very expensive. So it would be something we'd have to, you know, look, I forget what it is, but it's, I think they're over like 10 grand a piece.
And I think we even investigated that when we started with River Street, even the ones that you would manually have to go out and put them in, the foundation for that is, is a big deal because you have to go back and put the foundations in. You can correct me, Gary, but didn't, we had that discussion, I think before we did the Warner.
Yeah, we looked at the crash, the crash rated ones and ruled those out because of really the cost was the bottom line. I mean, it was, it was, and the rising up ones would be great. That's like you see at federal facilities, but that's not 10 grand. That's probably 100 grand, if not more, just for one of those.
Well, ones that will stop Mack trucks, yeah, those are data centers too. I go buy them all the time, but I'm just more, I mean, and I can do some more research and look at it, but I know they're expensive, bottom line, but I think we at least explore it, see if we can find some money somewhere eventually at some point because, you know, again, I know they're expensive, but I don't want to have something, you know, I'd much rather have the peace of mind with, you know, 10,000 people down there eventually on a big crazy day and you just never know these days.
I think that that's something we should talk about in the future, but I think what we're really concerned about this year is to try to develop how we use that street during, you know, the first year as a one-way. And, and I think the biggest thing to me was, let's try to maximize the space that we have out there for the businesses to be able to use and for events to happen, to make it easy, to make that stuff happen simpler. You know, if we have to do simpler process to, you know, schedule an event and get an okay to shut the street down or to do something different over there than what we're allowing with the one-way. And then also to talk about, you know, the downtown areas, the Dora type setup down there where you'd be able to control, a different way to control alcohol consumption there so that there's tracking. I don't think it's right for businesses to go through all the time and the energy to schedule an event, to plan for an event, to, you know, broadcast out through every social media outlet and everything else they can to get an event to happen. And then somebody roll up with a cooler beer and one entire, two entire tables, whatever it is, don't buy anything from that business. You know, if I ran a business in that atmosphere, I wouldn't want somebody bringing everything in that they wanted me to do on their car. And I actually have a different rate that I charge somebody in labor when they bring their own parts. The reality is out there that that has to happen. And, you know, when it, when it comes to this in downtown area, we've never done it before. I know other cities have done it and I know that they've changed how they do it over time or they've modified the way they do it. So if we do something like that, I'd really kind of like to do a test timeframe, like maybe do three months or six months and then come back, sit in this room again and talk about, hey, what worked, what didn't? Have the businesses come down, say the same things to us, what, what worked, what didn't? And so we can make it work and maybe test it on one part of town and then expand it to the entire downtown. Because I think it's a viable option to, you know, increase what can happen with the areas that we have in town and downtown especially. And I think it's important that we take everything that we learned from before COVID, during COVID and post-COVID and keep that energy of people wanting to come downtown and wanting to be here and staying local and staying small because it is very important. If we bring people downtown, we have to give them something to do or they will go elsewhere for it. And I think it's really important. And when I saw St. Charles is going to shut a street down again, you know, the reality out there is you have to pay attention to what businesses need and try to be able to provide that. And I think we've got a beautiful street over here. I'd love that we'd be able to do five more blocks elsewhere. But reality is we have to make sure that we take care of what's out there and make it viable. And I think Main Street, when they decided to do the Wednesday night market, really sees the, the reality of how many people come down here every weekend. I mean, I spent a lot of time last year just observing things. And I will tell you, it was amazing to me to sit out on, you know, the street out there and watch people go by and listen to the questions that happen and know that most of the people there are not from Batavia. You know, there's a core group that always is there and there was, you know, I probably could count 10 different states that I heard from and, you know, the months that I sat down there and just watched. So I think it's important that we really try to maximize what we can do there. And I think we built this street to have interesting and, you know, different things happen on it. And we've got it and we need to keep it going.
I couldn't agree with you more. I definitely want to highlight though, maybe this is the security man in me, but security as we grow in these things becomes something we need to pay, we should pay attention to very much so. It, it does nothing but add to the ambiance if anything. You know, people understand, okay, I'm in a safe zone here rather than.
I'm not discounting it at all. I just think we have, one discussion we need to, you know, take care of tonight. And I definitely think we should discuss how we're going to handle that in the future. Sarah?
I agree with everything, everything that you said, Alan. We have a very special area that is booming on the nights that it's closed. Let's maximize that. Let's do whatever we can to make sure that everybody there is thriving.
I said right from the beginning of this, when we got the Warner up and really going and anytime that something can be, you know, promoted there, that can be programmed out on that street, I'm all for supporting that. I mean, and that's the whole reason we did this, the whole reason we did Streetscape, the whole reason we put in planters and bump outs and everything else to make people feel like they want to be down here. And, and we have to keep doing it.
Can I ask a clarifying question about what the perimeters for events would look like or entail? And if that's something the businesses are doing, if that's something we're doing and if we think, I'm picturing Wednesday nights for trivia, Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, trivia nights. And it taking up the whole street and wondering how a perimeter would work and if it would still be just as easy to bring a cooler and sit outside the perimeter, you know, like if it would solve the problem that we're having or if it would just be a perimeter and then somebody with a cooler.
I'm glad that you're asking the question. We want to, you know, we're into experimentation, right? But in all of our other events that we have in other areas of the city, we make it the responsibility of the event organizer to set that perimeter up. I think that we should be very flexible with people. And man, if you can only come up with, you know, orange cones and a rope, then it's orange cones and a rope and we'll improve upon it later. But the, what the problem we're trying to overcome is that in the areas that were away from the business that was hosting the event, it, it became a little bit of a free for all. And I don't think that it was a good look for Batavia. You had patrons of the salon, say, both patrons who were coming for later appointments in the evening and then people who worked there leaving, who were subject to some pretty rude behavior by drunk people, cat calls and, and things of that nature. And so I think it would be different if people were within parameters that were, you know, established by the business as this is the area that our activities are going on. And then also it's going to be some responsibility on our police department too, to go over there and check out what's happening in the areas that are outside of that perimeter. So I want it to be a partnership because I think these businesses, you know, it's great that all of these people were attracted to those events, but they themselves said, our staff doesn't have the capacity to know what's going on 100 feet away from our business.
And even if it's a check-in once or twice a night, you know, where an officer stops and walks through, I think that, you know, once that is out there in the public and they know that we're watching it and that, you know, we want the businesses to provide the alcohol and make the money off of it, I think people will realize that they have to, you know, stay, stay between the curbs that aren't there.
One more clarifying question. Are we discussing the Dora tonight or is that coming back at a later time?
I would recommend that we discuss a Dora at a later time because there are a lot of parameters to it. I mean, for instance, the issuing of a special cup by all of the participating businesses. I'd like to get more of the businesses who would be participating in that involved to see if they would be willing to make the investment in, you know, purchasing those special kind of cups that people are going to use for that.
Yeah, when I brought that up, I didn't realize all the depth of which you have to go through for that. So I think it's something that we need to give the correct amount of time to. But I think the idea of that, especially if we take a small area and maybe say, we're going to do it for three months on River Street and see how it works. I think that that's something that, you know, we can use that moving forward.
Like a single night or something like that. If it was Wednesday nights between here and there. Yeah, I was just thinking, I was like, Dora and perimeters and I could not, they were, they seemed contradictory. So yes, let's stick with that one topic today.
Sarah?
Are we thinking about having the street shut down for the summer again then? Or like what we did last year, just Thursday through Monday?
Just shutting it down when there's an event so that, because otherwise for the whole day on Tuesday, if there was an event in the evening, it, you know, there was no reason to have the whole thing shut down when people who live there, people who, their businesses face those two alleys that are back there. It inconvenienced all of those folks when there was nothing going on.
So kind of along that line, Laura, the concern that I may have for that, I mean, I absolutely love the idea of making it easier for the businesses to be able to have these events and close it down. But how is that going to get communicated to residents and to business owners of, hey, the road is being closed down, you know, for the accommodations type thing? That, that would be probably one, one of my biggest concerns.
I do have a list that of the probably about 40 people that I notify of anything having to do with North River Street. So it would be easy for the city to put out notice, especially because the businesses who have applied for special event permits for this year have said, these are things we're going to be doing every Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So I, I'll know that, you know, that's something that they can expect is from this time to this time, that the street will be shut down for that event.
Yep. I was just wondering if some signage would help with that for, for outside beverages being brought in, you know, to make people aware that that's not a.
We have our own sign department. We could probably have something that says that put on, on the ones that get slid out.
Food and, food and beverage, but there's other restaurants just like on the perimeter there. We wouldn't want to exclude them from. I don't know. I'm just raising that.
That's correct. And I, I have heard from one of the businesses that is located adjacent to, but not on North River Street, that they would like the opportunity to be able to host events on North River Street too, and set up alcohol service within a perimeter and, and have their event.
I might caution restricting food in case somebody might be attending the event who has like very specific dietary concerns with friends. But I do think maybe like a, even like a no cooler rule could be a way to police that a little bit.
What?
A no cooler rule. Hard to say. Something like that, just to police that a bit because I do think, yeah, people bringing their own beverages to this area can meet cross purposes to what this is and could encourage heavier drinking than we want in that rural location.
This is like a limited thing, but I could see where somebody would be bringing a cooler because of things that they're bringing for their kids.
Yeah, that's kind of maybe like really cool. I know, it's all very.
I'll think about it. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I was just thinking that could, maybe that would come up.
Or just maybe expressly, don't bring your own alcohol. Just making people aware that that's somewhat looked down upon as a starting point, if anything.
If a motorized by one, by then. Who does? Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I like the idea of signage. And I think if there's one thing we've learned through the last few years is we, we've been nimble, we've tried things and some have worked, some haven't. But I think most people bringing coolers probably don't even, I shouldn't say most, I would guess a good percentage are doing it, are doing it because they don't think it's illegal. So I think signage will, will go a long way. And then once the police show up a couple of times and, and the word is out, comes its, its own law in and of itself. So I don't think it'll be a, an ongoing problem once, once we face it.
Thank you. Okay, now we've got a few people here that have sat here all night.
I think Alderman Seron's last comment was, was a good comment. I think once the police department makes contact with a few people and the word gets out, I don't think it'll be a problem anymore. And so I'm going to argue, why put up signs? People will ignore signs anyways. People, you walk by signs all the time. But if, if we can handle it on a personal level and discourage people, then, then I don't think signs are even going to be needed after the first couple of months of people not bringing their coolers.
Maybe two signs just so the cops can point at it.
Actually, I think that is for, more for self policing where anybody could say, well, the sign over here says you can't bring that in here. So take your can, old style and leave.
And, and if it's nice and big, it's right when you walk in. Yeah, it's a little bit of social shaming.
And maybe some communication too, you know, through, Lori Bodderman can put together a campaign about, you know, these, how you can expect events to run on North River Street this year.
Outside alcohol prohibited.
Yep. Support, support our local businesses. Don't, don't be Y O.
Bring your own body, not booth.
Right. Bring your own dollars.
I was going to say make it funny if you can.
Yeah.
That was my attempt at.
I appreciated it.
Okay. So does the crowd have anything to say? Do you want to come up and talk to us? Please do.
Been going to River Street quite often these past four years, seen how it's changed. And it's, it's, it's a great thing for, for downtown. But last year, take a look at what happened. We closed it for the four days. It worked great. But I noticed Tuesday night with the local talent showcase on the street, it was open and we tried to experiment the cars and people together. And we got two kinds of people driving down River Street during these, these events and. And one is the people who are working there or dropping off there or live there. And they come through very cautiously. Some of you with their hazard blinkers going, and that's good. And then you got the people trying to take a shortcut to the bridge who come flying through there. Not a good mix. I saw three people that almost got hit. And this past year is not a good year for people and vehicles. I'd hate to see anybody get hurt. But we did start putting the barricades out. And that did alleviate, giving us the flexibility to do that did help a lot. And the barricade they had in the garage, the people just run it over till it was toothpicks to school. And they had no direction coming out of the garage, which way to go. There was a lot of confusion. That is entertaining. I was saying, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's working out, but still needs some tweaking parameters. With the cones and ropes, I don't see how that's going to work because it's the whole street.
And again, we would want the street shut down if there's an event going on out there, you know, and people have to get in if they live there. I think most of the people that run the events know the people that live there. So we can figure that out, you know, on a case by case basis. But I think we would prefer that the street be shut down when there is an event that has any size to it.
That'd be nice, yeah.
And when anybody's applied for a permit for that, then we would shut the street down as well.
It's saying a paid permit or just notice if something's happening?
Well, the businesses that would run the events would get the permits. Okay.
My name is Craig Foltos and I live at 1244 South Batavia Avenue. And I have a building at 7 East Wilson Street. And it backs up to Newspaper Alley. And before we go any further, thanks for all your hard work. But 70 might be the new 50, but nine o'clock at night is the new midnight for me. So I want to speak fast. I appreciate...
Once a year, you can stay up this late.
Yeah, it's long. My teeth are sore, man. I appreciate all the effort that you're doing. What I have noticed, and I'm glad you're moving the planters because I crashed into them and I have to fix my truck. But I try really hard when they're having events. And I'm so supportive of all the businesses in Batavia. I try and meet every new business person. I love the vibrancy of the restaurants on River Street. It's wonderful for people to go out there. I agree with the gentlemen and the people that have been talking about having a little police presence. I think it goes a long way for a community to have policemen walk the town anyway so that we, they get to be our friends rather than being afraid of them. I like when you give me advance notice that they're going to have things because I hate being parked behind my shop and they're having all these people on the street. It scares the holy bejesus out of me that I'm going to, there's little kids running around there and it's terrifying for me. I would hate to hurt somebody. So I appreciate all that. I think that, you know, like there's always going to be bad apples. But if we have a police presence there and a few signs and we can say, hey, there's a sign over there and it's written really nice, you know, and it's saying nice things like, hey, man, please support the businesses around here and don't bring your own stuff in. It would go a long way. I think you can't always hit the baseball every time it crosses the plate. You do the best you can. You're doing a good job with it. It was way better last year than it was the year before. That's all I can say. And thanks again for all the hard work that you're doing right here. Okay?
Okay. You know, and realize, oh, come on up. I'll say while you're coming up that I really think that we want to be flexible and we want to know from the businesses when we start to try to do this, you know, what do you need? What can we do better? How can we work better together? All the stuff that it takes to be successful with our downtown. So we have to keep communications open. I don't want to see posts on Facebook about somebody upset about something. Come to us and talk to us about it first. So I think that's, you know, the biggest thing I wanted to make sure I got out tonight was, we need to be flexible. We need to have communication. And as this process moves forward, it's going to get better. We're going to change it. You're going to want something different. We're going to have to deal with all those things. And it's a learning process that I think we all have to be excited about because I think there's really good things to come from this. Yeah, howdy.
Hi. Ryan Shaver, 12 North River Street Sidecar Supper Club. We've mentioned a lot of great things. We did not talk about tables or lights. Should I just throw that out there? We love both of those things. I don't know what... I know that's a touchy... Go ahead.
Lights are in the works. Gary, that's in engineering. The engineering for that has been budgeted for this year.
Yeah, it's already in engineering right now.
In engineering.
Yep.
So...
And like the barrel, the old barrel lights or these are new?
No, these would be, we would be installing...
As in professional looking overhead lights.
Yes, cattary lighting through the hole.
Okay. Like above, like the buildings kind of doing the thing?
Yeah, we're not going to put it on the buildings because those limestone buildings don't like holes being put in them.
No.
And so we are going to erect our own posts. And, you know, people say, well, why don't you just use the light fixtures that are out there? It's because those light fixtures aren't meant to have any tension on them whatsoever. And those wires would, they just can't support those wires. So that's why we're going to have to build a whole system. But we're hoping to, you know, once the engineering comes in, to see whether we can even get that done before the end of this year or... Yeah. Yeah, it's feasible. The tables, we weren't planning on putting any tables out because we're trying to create that woo nerf space again. So it would just be the ordinary furniture that is out there. And that way it leaves us flexibility to, you know, you can create whatever space for your events that you need. We have surplus tables. So we were thinking of putting those for, you know, super discount sale for if that's something that you wanted to add to, you know, your own permanent space. So we can make that offer soon. We wanted to first, you know, have this discussion before we moved forward with that plan.
Right, right, right. So that would be a thing, let's, if you did that, you're moving the benches and the flower baskets back to the sidewalks. Would part of the street then be, you know, if you only need room for a car to go by when the street's open or when the street is closed, right? It's still going to have to have room for an emergency vehicle or a person.
It's for emergency vehicles. Thanks for pointing that out.
So would part of the street where those tables used to exist be, like we could permit, okay, now our patio is six more tables over there where they used to be, but that's just, that's our stuff. And everybody would be able to delineate, you know, we're in charge of this, you're in charge of that, right?
Yes.
Gotcha. Great. What else do I have?
It would be similar. It would add to the patio lease you currently have. Exactly. That's what we would anticipate.
Totally fine. We did, okay. Anyway, somebody mentioned the signage. When people come out of the garage, there is no sign that says that it's one way. So we do get a lot of people just go whatever way that they want. That's a thing. Also, we've probably talked about it before, but just all the time, like a 20 or 25 mile an hour speed limit seems like a way too fast on that street. Just all the time in general, like when it's open, when it's closed. It should, I have no wake zone in my notes if that means anything to everybody, you know? Drive through, but like it's a one block. It's one block. You can go eight miles an hour for a block.
Right.
Right? Does anybody else not want to come up and tell me a thing? We get, no, we get all the things?
I do have a question on the lights, Gary. When are you expecting that might be installed? Like May?
No, no. It's definitely going to be this season, but probably a summer/fall project.
Yeah.
So that may be an issue from what Ryan and Melissa is looking for as far as lighting, especially for their Thursday night because that lighting played...
Is a little dark.
Yeah. So I don't know if maybe the barrels could be used temporarily. I'm the barrel fan with you.
I'm glad you're talking about the barrels. It means more coming from you than...
I also like the barrels.
Yeah.
How hard are the barrels to put out? Can they be out until we get the other lights figured out and up?
They'd be sold to the businesses. Can they be sold with the tables to the businesses?
It's a good suggestion, right?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Let's do that.
I'd agree with that.
I will give you $50 for all the barrels and the lights right now. Okay?
$100, you got it.
No problem. All right, we got it. We've done these auctions before.
And I have no authority right now.
And I guess the end of what I would say then, what you were, this whole thing we've been mentioning, communication is the biggest thing. Like, and I don't know, there weren't, you know, 20 people out there with coolers. It wasn't like the beach every time the street was closed. But I don't know that during COVID, people really knew what they were supposed to do, right? Can I get stuff from wherever? Can I bring my own things? Is it a public drinking area? I don't know. So you're right. If there were, you know, yes, a walkthrough or two every night. And we know, I don't even think that we knew that we should be or could tell people, you can't bring your own alcohol to the street, right? So if everybody knows what the rules are, it's going to be fine. So, yeah. Okay. Great. Thanks. All right.
Yeah.
I would very much support putting up the speed limit sign of like 15 miles per hour on River Street.
It is 20 right now, yeah.
Or even less, like just like where it's, where people see that one five instead of a two something, you know, and where...
Might be a police department enforcement. Yeah, it might be a statutory thing that...
I see those 10 mile an hour speed limits all the time, though. Those are, I mean, they're effective to a certain extent, you know?
And then maybe even... There's a lot going on on North River Street. When you turn onto that street, there is so much going on. I'm not sure that people even see you could have it a five mile per hour speed limit.
I've been in other communities also where they've had little non-permanent speed bumps in certain areas like that to slow down traffic. And, I mean, Batavia doesn't have any of that. And I'm just curious why we don't explore that option more.
One of the reasons on North River Street was, is that because it's a shared space with the bicycles and the pedestrians and the vehicles, it being a trip hazard for people walking through, say, like the farmer's market, if we have that in the middle of the roadway. Do you want to come up and make a suggest?
This conversation, there's two kinds of people that drive down River Street, the ones that drive, the ones that are in a hurry. A five mile an hour sign, it's enforcement is the only way.
One is careful, the other one's trying to get from here to there as fast as they can.
If you had a five mile an hour sign on there, the guy taking a shortcut isn't going to do five mile an hour.
An enforcement issue.
Everybody else does that anyway.
I would rather somebody trip over a speed bump than get hit by a car, honestly.
Yeah, and there are those heavy duty like yellow plastics. So it's like, it's really visible. I mean, something to explore. I like the idea.
The other thing you could do is instead of having it go straight across, you could almost like space them out, like one on one side and the other. So that kind of makes the car slow down because even if they don't want to go over it, they'd have to like slow down to drive around it and allow the bikes stagger. That's what I'm thinking.
You're inviting people to walk down the street as a woo nerf, okay? It's an instant lawsuit. People are going to wipe out, something's going to happen. It's a horrible idea.
And we have permeable drainage system, I think, is in the intersection there, isn't it, Gary? That has to remain open. So the realities of trying to do this and make it functional and make it not a legal nightmare, I think are a little bit beyond what we're going to be able to do.
If you just buy two of them and stagger them.
I didn't see that one that was staggered because I was looking at this one back here and I wiped out and broke my neck. I'm suing the city.
I just suggested something to look into. Or options or other ways, you know, because a police officer cannot sit down on River Street all the time. So are there other ways we can do traffic calming? That's all.
And we also have to remember that we can't legislate against somebody's stupidity because that's the reality of what we have to deal with every day with drivers. We have speed limit signs all over our city that say you have to go 35 or 45. And we regularly see people, and the report we get almost every day, that are double the speed limit in some spaces.
Right, but we don't have events on the middle of Wilson Street.
Right, but the reality is, we can tell people everything we want. We can put signs, we can put speed bumps out there, and they'll still do what they want because they don't have the law, the law doesn't apply to them.
I think River Street's unique, though. I think it's, I mean, I know where you're coming from. But I think it's unique to the point where we can do some really targeted approaches right there. The lawyer makes a good point. If there's another way, though, that we slow a car down, I mean, to tag on to what Jennifer was saying in terms of zigzagging or slow, you know, I mean, and sometimes it's not intentional. You're just going along and next thing, I mean, you know, cars roll so smooth these days, you're doing 30, you don't even know it. And, you know, so just an idea.
I mean, the theory of moving all the street furniture was to...
Right, slow them down, yeah.
And slow them down. And that's apparently not successful. So I don't know that you're going to accomplish what you want to accomplish.
Mark?
Yeah, I'd rather find a way to put a lower speed limit down than try and... Laurie, you kind of mentioned it's busy. I mean, prior to even me being on council when I would drive down there, I don't think I've ever driven 20, the speed limit on there, I've driven like 10 miles an hour because as I pull into there, I recognize it as something, it makes me slow down, but it's not going to make it, doesn't matter. And actually, I was thinking of a speed limit of like, I've seen them odd where there's like eight miles an hour because then that's like, oh, that's weird. And it catches your attention that it's something that's way out of the ordinary. But again, that's, that street is out of the ordinary. And probably the vast majority of people are like, are driving, like you guys said, like with hazards on or driving very slowly because most responsible people are going to do that. There are still going to be irresponsible people. And you are, you can't legislate against stupidity. You can't, we could, we could just make it a no car zone. I mean, you can go bizarre to try and make it completely safe, but nothing is ever going to be completely safe. You can't make everything completely safe.
Remember, we have to include bikes now in that because with the electric bikes that are out there are insanely quick in town.
My dogs almost got hit. And that would have been a bad day for the person hitting my dogs if they got hit.
The observation I made is, when the barricades are up, the only people who go there are the people who are real cautious because the people in a hurry ain't going to move the barricades as soon through there. They go zip around. So as soon as the barricade's up, that problem is solved.
Yeah, but it's just, it's the, in general, when people are driving on the street, that it's meant to be a shared street. And again, responsible people aren't going to do the wrong thing. But there's, we have criminals in a justice system for a reason.
Thank you for the discussion. And I think that I've got a lot of things that I can work with the businesses this year to try to make improvements on what we've done before. And, you know, we can always make adjustments as we go along as well.
The removal of barricades are going back like it was last year?
Yes.
Anytime the street is programmed and shut down.
On the north side.
They'll be out there.
Yep.
For events.
Just not all day.
Thanks, everybody for coming down and listening for everything else and being here so we can go through this. And, you know, we need to keep the communication constant and open on this.
I will just make note that if, and just popped in my head, but if we end up moving forward with the city surveillance plan, we'll be able to get some really good solid data in terms of what, what it really looks like. Are we, are we seeing a ton of people speeding down there? Are we not? Or how many people are going the wrong way? All that stuff can be set up via analytics and so.
Alderbin Wolf and Laura, I would also like to make mention that as we, you know, look at traffic calming measures or we're looking at activities on River Street, that we should be keen of focusing on some of our partners that are in the community. And I think that working with Main Street would be a key element to keeping the community in that area more informed of what's going on with the street. They do have their restaurant guide and other resources that allow for them to post certain things. They have a social media pages so they can always pass the word as well. But we do need to make mention to start using our partners in the community, even if that's a Main Street Chamber and other people that might be aware of a lot of the events that are taking place on River Street. I do agree with the sentiment that with the North River Street is definitely a different dynamic. I walk down there quite a bit just for strolls and it is a different dynamic. It does allow for you to relax. It does allow for you to have fun and also appreciate what that whole area is all about. I'm excited that our businesses want to actually do something with that street. I'm also excited to see that the city council is also being mindful of both safety, but also the benefits of being able to, you know, appreciate what we have in Batavia. I know St. Charles is doing quite a bit, but Batavia can do a lot as well. And I think along with the communication piece, I think that is a solid point to keep in mind because I think that with that special street comes special responsibilities. And if we want that street to be successful, we have to make sure that, you know, we have people on River Street that are going to take responsibility, you know, for, you know, trash and just keeping an upkeep up on that street because again, it's beautiful. I know a lot of businesses are excited to do something special over there, but it's going to definitely be a partnership that we have to experience together. And I'm actually excited about it to just see Batavia grow in such a way. So I just wanted to share that sentiment.
Thank you. And, and I think you're right that we do have to take advantage of the partners that we do have. I know that was one of the discussions that I had leading up to this was with Main Street about how we needed to look at how we'd handle this different this year and, and, you know, just evolving every year with it. So that way we do get it to grow and, and not just be that little spot, but other places in town as well.
You got the two-tier parking lot, the garage in the upper parking lot. And for what, three years now, the stairs have been closed to the upper parking lot. People, you have to be a billy goat to get down or walk three blocks out of your way. Is, is there any plan or what's, what's going on with the stairs?
Yeah, that's budgeted to take care of those stairs this year.
This year, yeah. That engineering is underway.
It's budgeted this year to reconstruct those stairs.
Before summer?
It's under engineering right now.
Yeah, it's under engineering right now. So sometime this summer or late summer.
Let's move on to item 15, project status.
Okay. On April 29th at 6 o'clock PM, we will be hosting a town hall style meeting with Flint Group to discuss the March 8th A triple F foam release into Mahoney Creek and what actions are being taken to clean it up. So anybody who's interested in that is invited to attend. And we also sent a letter out to all of the homes that are adjacent to that leg of the creek where that release happened. Also want you to save the date of May 19th. We are going to be in the process of installing the historical markers around town. And there'll be a walking tour of those historical markers, beginning at the Batavia Public Library, again, May 19th at 1 o'clock PM. In Community and Economic Development, the, the proposed downtown plan is going to move forward to the committee of the whole on May 14th. Human Resources has begun a review of our employee handbook. We're working through that. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Thank you.
Anybody on the council have any others?
Yeah, just, I had mentioned previously at a previous meeting about some of the eighth grade middle school students in the music program playing for us. And I've been working with Keith Osvest, the director. So we'd like to do next Monday, I'm sorry, next, the council meeting on the 6th. Get that on the agenda. My thought was that, as I've been communicating with, with Keith, that they could play prior to the meeting as we assemble and then maybe play a short piece during the meeting and be recognized. It'd be great if we could get them on the agenda.
I'll second that. Mark?
Yes, really quickly, when we were talking about the Ashton Ridge development, I talked about my hope on Wilson that it gets more developed in that area as part, basically because of that development. So if somebody would join me, I'd like to have a conversation about how to maybe use tax revenue specifically from that development to create some sort of grant or incentive program to help maybe get people to redevelop some of those properties in that area.
I'll join you.
Without TIF district?
What's that?
Without a TIF district.
Without a TIF district. So basically use, you know, create your own kind of TIF-type district based on the revenue from that area. I don't know how that's possible, but I'd like to discuss it.
At least discuss it.
At least start the conversation.
Okay. Sarah?
Dan and I went to Springfield last week for lobby day, sat in on four meetings, spoke with lots of other local elected officials and personnel.
Oh, you're being, you're being modest. You knocked it out of the park during your presentations.
That is overstating, but very kind. It was very informative. It was very interesting. We feel like the Metro West was definitely heard on the points that we brought forth. Everybody that, yeah, it was, it was very enlightening and very informative.
Did you have an opportunity to get to know a little bit better our legislative consultants? Dave Sullivan and Mark Pulos, were they accompanying you?
They were, they were on hand. We did not get a chance to have a lot of one-on-one time with them.
Okay.
What we did, speak with senior leadership at the Capitol. And I, I guess I can be happy to report that the crime-free housing bill that was likely meant to strip us of all the powers that we had is back in, in the Rules Committee all of a sudden.
Excellent.
There are things wrong with that bill. There are things right with that bill. But then imposing the same rule on everybody at the same time without even listening to or inviting the municipalities to the table to discuss that bill was such a mistake. We also had a chance to complain about the direct hits to our budget for the grocery tax. And one by one, each community was unified and we yelled out our number. And I think you did a better job at yelling out the number than I did. On behalf of Batavia, 1.2, was it 1.2 million dollars? Yeah. They were, they were missing from that. We learn that senior leaders sometimes swear that they are real human beings.
Very, very minimally, but effective.
For sure. It was, it was such, it was one of the most powerful trips I think we've been on so far.
Thank you guys for representing us.
However.
However.
For some reason, all of the housekeeping staff at our hotel didn't work there anymore that night. And I think they were possibly trying to sabotage our meetings with the, with IED and all the agencies the next morning. And so we did miss those. We would like to reschedule them. Nobody wanted to stay in Decatur for some reason. I'm not sure why that is. We could have driven to Decatur to go for a place to sleep, but that whole town was, was sold out. It's unfortunate.
And Bloomington. There was no hotel rooms within 90 minutes.
Thank you guys for going down. I did appreciate talking to you after you guys were down there and told me about what happened with the hotel. I think it is important, you know, that we have that. Hopefully I'll be available to go next year. With only two years left, I'd really like to get down there again. I think it's important, you know, anybody that's on the council that hasn't been there yet, you really need to figure out how to go and be part of that because it is a good experience to be able to go there, talk to those representatives, those staff members, the employees that are down there that we get to talk to while we're there and have that communication and then see what happens with that. Sometimes things happen, sometimes things don't. But the communication, again, we talked about this a little earlier, is really important that that has to happen. And us as a, you know, I don't like using the term lower government body, but another government body that has to be able to communicate things that affect our citizens, that affect our city with the legislators above us and with the employees of the departments that we have to deal with, that our staff has to deal with on a daily basis, is really important that we keep that open and that we build on that. So any chance we get to do that, we need to take an opportunity and do it. So it is really important.
As I said, the direct lobbying we can have with our own neighboring communities, the relationships we built with Geneva, of course, the mayor has his relationship with Kevin. Sarah, you have your own relationship with Kevin now. We, we all, we have different interactions with, with each other. We were frustrated. We couldn't get a room. I almost possibly lifted a cot we could sleep on with the help of other elected officials in other towns. It's, it's nice to see the camaraderie that's there. And there's barbecue coming up in the late spring, early summer. So we can always go to events like that and, and meet with our counterparts there. It's been one of the most valuable parts of my service. I would definitely recommend, if you haven't been, get involved with Metro West because we have so many things that we could be leveraging our neighbors to get some help with. Thank you.
Anybody else have any others? I don't. For motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion by Soffa, second by you, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.